All right, we're a little late, but I'd like to start the meeting. Everyone, please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Welcome, everyone. Township of Old Bridge Zoning Board of Adjustment, meeting December 4, 2025. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting by prominently posting in the municipal complex an announcement giving the time, the date, the location, the agenda of this meeting, also by mailing such announcement to the home news and Tribune, filing a copy of such announcement with the municipal clerk, and posting the agenda on the municipal website. Ms. Portelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Andrews, absent. Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scagno?
Present.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
Ms. Testaverde? Absent. Mr. Singh? Absent. Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Savant?
Yeah.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is being televised on local cable channel here, TV-15. Simultaneously, it's also being shown on YouTube Live. If you ever want to refer back to the meeting, you can probably find it on YouTube Live. I would ask everyone in the courtroom, please, I know there's a lot of people here tonight, you have a cellphone, please silence it. We can't have the noise interfere with the microphones for the testimony. So if you would, please silence them. Thankfully, we've gotten the fire alarm on the door silenced temporarily, I hope, I mean permanently, I hope. We'll see. And there's a lot of people here tonight. I'm assuming that people are going to want to have a comment about something, I don't know what, but I'm going to find out later on. There's going to be a microphone that's going to be placed behind the railing here, so when you do come to testify before the board, and by the way, your comments will be under oath because you are actually adding to the testimony. So this is a quasi-judicial board, and the attorney would advise you, and he will swear you in prior to any comments that you make. But getting back to the microphone, please speak directly. These are directional mics, please speak directly into it. You don't have to be on top of it, but you have to speak directly into it, okay? So that's what I would ask you to follow as we move on with the meeting. I will tell you that if you're here in Prime Space Capital, that was the first one on the agenda. That's 03-2025Z, Prime Space Capital, the physical location, 12 Pine Street here in Old Bridge for a self-storage facility. That application has been adjourned. That will not be heard this evening, the public, this will be placed back on the agenda, January 8th, there will be further notice. But if you're here on that matter, it's not going to be heard tonight, there's no reason for you to stay unless you just want to keep us company. No comments on that one. We will continue with the agenda as it is written, if you happen to have a copy. We have a few housekeeping issues to take care of next, and then we'll get to our applications. Board members, we only have five this evening for the attorneys that might be here, if that has any bearing on your decisions. We have Minutes Board of November 20, 2025 meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to review them. Absent, any comments? I'd ask someone to move them for adoption.
Move it, Scagno.
Is there a second?
Izzo?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. Seated to my right and your left is the board attorney, it's Pat Varga. I'm going to call on him next to do some work, but that's who the gentleman to my right and your left is. Please, this is also being picked up by a stenographer for the application, so it's important that you speak coherently so that then the stenographer can record it, okay? Thank you. Mr. Varga, 63-2024Z, 1103 Route 35 LLC, that was on an appeal, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a resolution overturning the zoning officer denial for property known and designated as Block 24, Lot 11, AKA 1103 Highway 35, and directing the issuance of a continuing certificate of occupancy for the continuous operation of a gentleman's club.
Board members, you heard the resolution. Someone want to move for adoption, please?
Move it, Scagno.
Second.
Who's the second?
Who's the second? Spinelli?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 41-2024Z, Zaher Hussein, C and D variance, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a resolution granting an application for bulk variance and density variance approval for property known and designated as Block 24204, Lot 36, AKA 12 Yosemite Court. Density variance of .198 where 17% is permitted, and landscape ratio variance of 81% where 85% is required for a two-story addition and proposed deck over an existing patio.
Thank you, sir. Board members, someone move for adoption, please?
I move it.
Second, Scagno.
Moved in second? Do you have that, Ms. Portelli?
Yes, I do.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. 39-2025Z, Charles Haggerty and Brooke Weber, C variance, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a resolution granting an application for bulk variance approval for property known and designated as Block 13003, Lot 11, AKA 472 Tyse Town Road, for the construction of a two-story addition, the installation of a new 24-foot by 35-foot and 12-foot-high detached garage with electric but no plumbing, as well as a 6-foot-high PVC fence with the following variances: 850 square foot for building size where 600 square feet is permitted, side yard setback of 13 feet where 20 feet is required, and building height of 20 feet where 15 feet is permitted.
Thank you. Someone move that for adoption, please?
Move it, Scagno.
For a second.
Gomez.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. And finally, counselor, 41-2025Z, Nancy Lowe, C variance, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a resolution granting an application for bulk variance approval for property known and designated as Block 17011, Lot 4, AKA 16 Schindler Drive. Purpose of the application is to replace an existing deck and construct a sunroom on the footprint of the deck. The following variance was requested: 29.39 feet is proposed for a rear yard setback where 45 feet is required.
Board members?
Move it, Scagno.
Second, Gomez.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Izzo?
Yes.
Mr. Scagno?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Chairman Sullivan?
Yes. We come to the squaring into the professionals, as you, looking at the dais, to my left is Ms. Venus Sawant, who is the professional planner, and Ryan McCarthy, who's professional engineer. They'll be sworn in.
You swear a firm, tell truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God? Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Vida Sullivan.
Okay, we move on to applications. I've already mentioned that Prime Space is not on the agenda. We move to 47-2024Z, it's Bergen Concepts LLC. This is IDO1 Economic Development Zone, seeking major preliminary and final site plan with a D variance. Applicant proposes to erect a LED billboard on property. Jason Tuval Esquire representing, sir? You need a minute to let your people get set up? For the record, I'm going to say that it's 10 minutes to eight. We're going to limit, because of the time, 45 minutes per application, and I have three. So I would appreciate if you would cooperate with the time, sir.
Hold it down.
It's got to be green, when it turns green. There you go.
There we go, okay. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jason Tuval, attorney for the applicant, Bergen Concepts LLC. This is an application for Block 13,000, Lot 9.12. At the site currently is an existing gas station with Minmart located on Route 9, heading northbound. The goal here is to construct or erect a billboard that is digital at the property. The application, as a result of that, needs variance relief pursuant to D1 of the municipal land use law for use variance, as the billboard is not permitted within the zone. In addition to that, the application also needs a D variance for having two principal uses on one lot, where you have the gas station and Minmart, and that you would have the billboard as proposed. With me this evening, I have four witnesses that I plan on calling. I doubt, based on the time constraints that we have and the fact that there's only five board members as well, that we'll get to all four, but what I plan on doing is having our applicant testify first. The applicant will just go through the operations of the billboard, so we'll stick very narrowly to how the messages change, what type of content goes up there, and things of that nature, okay? Then I'm going to have a civil traffic engineer, one witness that will be qualified as both a civil and traffic engineer. That testimony will basically go on site circulation, where the billboard is being placed on the site, which is fairly minimal, and then the remainder of the testimony will be traffic-related, visibility, site distances, things of that nature that the board can consider. The third witness that I plan on calling, if we get to that, would be a lighting expert, just to explain the lighting of the billboard, which is, I know, something in these types of cases that the board and the public is typically interested in. And then we would get to our final witness, which is our professional planner. So that's the lineup, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to spend too much time on an opening. I see, you know, you have a lot of people here. I provide my affidavit of notice and service to the board, so that should be in good order. So unless you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to call my first witness.
Answer's recognized, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So the first witness I'd like to call is Marty Judge.
Yes, stand right here.
Slide the chair over and the microphone. Do you have to, when it turns green?
All right, sir, please just raise your right hand. You swear a firm, tell truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Martin, Martin Judge, J-U-D-G-E. I'm a member with Bergen Concepts.
Back to you, counselor.
Okay. Just remember that in terms of the site plan and the visuals, I have the other experts for that. This will just be about operational characteristics of the billboard. So Marty, can you just describe your relationship with the application? You're a principal in Bergen Concepts, the applicant?
I am.
Okay. And how long have you been, I'll call it, in the billboard industry? How long have you been dealing with billboards?
Since 1988, about 37 years.
Okay. And your experience with billboards relates to the construction and development of the billboards?
Construction, development, sales, marketing.
Okay. And you're fully familiar with how they operate as well, correct?
I am.
Okay. And you operate the billboards on behalf of your entity as well?
We do.
Okay. So if we could just discuss, I guess, first would be, how do the ads change? How often do they change? There's ordinance provisions on that. Can you just explain how that works?
Yeah. In the last 10, 15 years, digital billboards would be the billboards that people would develop. They allow us the ability to change ads without people going on the billboards. Normally, most billboards in the country get eight-second spots per 64 seconds. I am aware that there's a regulation in the town for 30-second spots, which we're okay with. So we predominantly sell the billboard space to local and regional customers, you know, banks, shopping centers, retail, wherever in the area.
So that was in your board planner's review letter dated December 1, 2025, asking for testimony regarding how often the messages would intend to change. As Mr. Judge said, typically, it's eight seconds, but we would, if the board were to approve the application, we would comply with the 30-second requirement set forth in the ordinance. Marty, could you explain how the content of the billboard is vetted and how it ultimately gets on to the billboard itself?
Yeah. Most of the people that advertise on this billboard advertise on other billboards in the Jersey area, so, you know, they come to us when they're looking to target a certain area, they have a campaign, it's usually hooked up with cable and other formats of media. We would go to contracts, they email us artwork, we'd upload it to the billboard, it would be up for the duration of the campaign, and then come down.
All right. And it's screened to, obviously, confirm that all the material and content is appropriate?
Yeah. We really vet copy and content. Internally, we reserve the right to approve or disapprove copy, and we have probations with our, you know, internally with our company, and also we have probations, a lot of times, with the landlord.
Okay. And the content or the billboard itself is controlled remotely by your company. Can you just explain how that works?
Yeah, it's fairly simple. It's, it would be similar to, I hate to say it, but like a dating app or something, where you'd upload a picture of something and press play, and then, you know, the content plays on the billboard. It's formatted for that size of the billboard.
Okay. Can you also explain how the billboard is used for emergency alerts, for non-for-profits, for community-type of messaging, and things of that nature?
Yeah. It's almost unheard of that the billboards are sold out, so that, you know, in the old days, obviously, you'd only have two sides to a billboard. Now, with additional space and the fact that you can change it, there's always going to be open space. And with that- And with that open space, we always offer it back to the town, the community. Usually, there's someone at the town we work with, we've done that in many places, and they might reach out to us and say, there's rates for the cure, or there's a benefit for someone, or we have a recycling program, and we just donate the space to the community. As long as it's on a nonprofit basis, you know, we we give a lot of space back.
Okay. And I know we're going to have a lighting expert testify, but just to kind of preview that, the billboards can be dimmed, the lightings can can be adjusted. Can you just explain that?
Yeah. It's counterintuitive, but these billboards give off a lot less light than a traditional billboard due to the fact that they're digital. And I'll let the lighting expert explain that, but, you know, the older billboards would have lights that would hit them, and and there was light bleed on these. They they actually burn. They burn at different times of the day, and they work with the sun. So as things get lighter and or darker, they adjust.
Okay. And in terms of LED, they're more energy efficient, correct?
Like a ninety percent difference in in our energy bills.
Okay. And then, this was also part of the ordinance, but I just wanted to make sure this was clear as well. None of the messages would blink, flash, scroll, or anything along those na- nature?
No. NJ DOT allows us to, you know, they have standards that allow us to use, it's almost, they kind of call it static digital. So if you saw a bill, if you were ever at a car light and you saw a billboard and it changed from a plumber to a bank, it's almost instantaneous. You can't have anything in motion, you can't have rolling, it's not going to, like, Times Square would be that. This, we can't do that, and we can't do it with NJ DOT regs, let alone anywhere else.
Okay. And then, can you just speak about maintenance of the billboards? Do they need maintenance very often? How does that typically work?
Yeah, the billboards, I mean, in in a new case like this, after the construction is complete, there's almost very little maintenance from time to time, maybe once or twice a year, you might have one guy come out in a bucket truck and change a sensor or module, but there's no more guys up there changing the ads like you would see in the old days.
And then, in terms of outside agency approvals, specifically the New Jersey Department of Transportation, you've received the permit that is required for this billboard from the DOT, correct?
We have.
Okay. All right. That's all I have for Mr. Judge. I wanted just to go over some of the, again, operational aspects of this, but we'll get into more of the site plan later.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Mr. McCarthy?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Mr. Watt?
So I think I missed this one. With the timing, will it be twenty-four hours, or will it be limited to eleven PM?
Oh, that's, I'm all right. I did miss, that was in your memo as well. Marty, can you speak to that as well?
Yeah. Normally, they are twenty-four hours, but we were aware that there's a, on some of the other signs that you've put up in the town, it's eleven o'clock. We're agreeable to that.
Should the board act favorably, that would be one of the conditions of approval?
Yeah, we would comply with the ordinance provision that you cited in your memo, and we would comply with that timing limitation, in addition to the thirty-second between messages.
Okay. So I believe the only two items that remain are the height and the distance from another billboard. I'll hold off for any questions.
Yeah, I was, through the other witnesses, I was going to address those items, yes.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Watt. Board members on my left. Counselor?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mrs. Duval.
Okay. Our next witness is our civil-
Thank you, by the way, Mr. Judge.
-traffic engineer, Matthew Sekler-
Thank you. Good night, folks.
-from Stonefield Engineering and Design.
All right, sir. You swear or affirm tell truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
My name is Matthew Sekler. That's S E C K L E R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design, addresses Ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Back to you, counselor.
Thank you. All right. Matt, can you just give the board the benefit of your qualifications as a civil and traffic engineer in the state of New Jersey, educational background, license, whether it's in good standing, and experience testifying before similar boards?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College in Schenectady, New York, a Master's in City Regional Planning from Rutgers University, licensed professional engineer in the state, and recognized as a professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Been practicing for over fifteen years, been accepted for over one hundred and fifty boards in the state.
Thank you very much. We're going to accept your credentials, and I just want to tell everybody in the audience, this is done, one, for the record, and, two, for your information purposes. You're listening to a professional engineer. The man who's was doing the talking is the attorney. Now, the professional engineer is going to speak as to this project.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So Matt, why don't we just get the board oriented and the public to existing conditions, and then we could talk about where we're placing the billboard on the site?
Absolutely. I don't know who's controlling the, okay. Can you open up the, start with the bottom one?
You can see that far? That's crazy.
I just could say, I could see it has a really long name, and I think that's the-
Pretty good. Okay.
So what's before you is the, so dimming the lights, maybe? There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
And also, you know, I might as well open up the third one of that list and the first one. Do all of them, just so you have them ready. Okay, we'll go back to that first tab you have opened. Yep.
All right. So Matt, just identify what plan this is for the record, just so the board knows.
Absolutely. This was the submitted site plan package, the preliminary, final, major site plan package that was previously submitted and prepared by Dresner Robin. This is the first sheet of it, and I think if you were to be able to see what's in the top-left corner, that's an aerial image. I do have some other aerial images that I'll be sharing with the board, but just to orientate you, this is at the northeast corner of the intersection of Spring Valley Road and Route Nine. This is the Luke Oil site, so anyone who's familiar, it's just north of the Route Nine, Route Eighteen interchange. What we are proposing here, if you go to the second sheet, and for the record, this is block thirteen thousand, lot nine point one two. What you could see here is now we've moved the site plan sheet so north is to the left, so Route Nine would run along the bottom of the page, Spring Valley is on the right-hand side of the page. Essentially, we are proposing the billboard to be located at the northwest corner of the site, essentially in the similar location to where the existing Luke Oil freestanding sign is today. The sign itself is located outside of all of the drive aisles, so the pole that will be supporting the billboard sign is in the grass area or in the landscape area area. Does not have any impact to the site circulation in terms of vehicular flow in and out of the site, whether someone's going to the gas or the little Minimart in the site. So it's completely free and clear of that area. In terms of the billboard location, the curb on Route Nine sits about forty-five feet from the property line, so there's basically an area that the DOT owns that's forty-five feet of grass between the curb and where our property starts. And where our property starts is essentially where the closest edge of the actual billboard screen will be. The billboard would be supported by a pole, which you could kind of see in the middle of that image. The pole itself is located seventeen point one feet from the property line, but again, that property line sits significantly far back from the from the actual curb. So there's, you know, over seventy-five feet between where the driving, any drivers on Route Nine and the curb, if they would, you know, reach the curb to where they would actually come and impact or potentially impacting the pole itself. In addition, the sign itself is proposed to be twenty feet tall by fifty feet long. It is at a height, the top of the sign is at sixty-five feet, and obviously, it being twenty feet tall, the bottom of the sign is forty-five feet above grade. As you heard in terms of the discussion earlier, you'll hear from our planner regarding the D one variances that we're seeking related to this application, one with these two uses on the property, as well as obviously billboard not being a permitted use in the zone. But again, essentially, from a site plan perspective, in the general area of the existing freestanding sign, we will be proposing the billboard sign that you see here. In terms of what the billboard sign looks like, if we go to the next, let's go to the third tab, actually. Oh, let's try a second. No, we'll go to the second tab. Sorry about that. Yes.
Just identify what that is for the record, Matt.
This is a photograph or a set of four photographs of a similar billboard, electronic digital billboard in Englewood, New Jersey. This was prepared by Stonefield Engineering Design. Day prepared is, looks like twelve four, two thousand and twenty-five, but my eyesight is not great.
Mr. Varga, do you want to mark? The board does not have this, so you want to mark-
Mark it as exhibit A one.
Okay. And then, Matt, the reason that we use this as an example, we just didn't pick Englewood out of thin air is because this same applicant developed this billboard, correct?
Correct. So in terms of the technology, you know, the what they'd be able to provide at this site, Knoll Bridge, this would be, you know, what the applicant would be providing, has provided in the Englewood site. So in terms of, you know, the image, the clearness, the crispness, and again, you'll hear later on from the lighting engineer in terms of, you know, how the lighting is displayed and how far it shines and where it does not shine, but again, we wanted to give the board a general idea of what the billboard would look like when it's, if it becomes approved and active at this site. Next, I'll discuss a little bit about the traffic engineering as it relates to the billboard image.
Matt, before you do that, can you go back to just the first exhibit we did? I just want to hit some of the planner's comments in her letter.
Certainly.
So there was a comment regarding the, I guess, the interplay between the billboard and the canopy. Can you just speak to that? That was noted in the letter?
Yes, there's, as you can see from this image, there's no overlap between the canopy and the billboard. The canopy is kind of the light gray rectangle located on the right-hand side of the site, and the billboard is the darker gray image. And you could also see with, we've actually drawn, you could see the setback lines that are from the southerly property line to the billboard itself, also similarly reflects like the visual lines that a driver would see. So the canopy itself does not impact the view of the billboard. Our billboard would sit higher than the canopy and also does not conflict on a horizontal perspective either.
Okay. And then, similar similar items, requested testimony by the planner was the interplay between the existing sign for the gas station and the proposed billboard.
This sign would be higher than the existing sign that's on at the site today. The existing sign, I believe, is twenty-seven point nine one feet above grade. This one would be above that, so there'd be no conflict with blocking any images from one sign to the other.
Okay. And then, the the last one that I just want to make sure we got on the record was the distance between the post, the billboard post and the nearest access drive, and whether there's any concern you have there.
No, I do not have any concern. And again, the post that we are proposing is in a similar location to the existing freestanding sign for the Luke Oil business, which is clearly outside of the existing drive aisles that Luke Oil Business has utilized over the last, you know, probably decades of time. So again, there's no conflict between where we are putting our our pole that would be supporting the billboard and any of the driver maneuvers.
All right. So just on the site testimony itself, it's it's your professional opinion that the placement of the pole on-site does in no way inhibits or negatively impacts site circulation or any of the existing site conditions?
Correct. From a site circulation perspective, there is no impact. I would note, and obviously, you'll hear from our planner regarding some of the setbacks as it relates to the sign, but I want to remind the board that the setback as it relates to Route Nine, the property line sits forty-five feet back from the curb. So it's not like this sign or the sign edge is basically going to be close to overhanging the traveling public on Route Nine or forty-five feet back of the curb, while the sign does basically reach nearly the property line.
Okay. Why don't we now go to the the traffic, what are your testimony?
So from a traffic perspective, there's been significant research and and publications on the idea or effects of digital billboards. In two thousand and nine, there was a publication that was prepared by the FHWA, which is the Federal Highway Administration. It was titled "The Possible Effects of Commercial Electronic Variable Message Signs on Driver Attention and Distraction." And then, they subsequently, three years later, published a document called "Driver Visual Behavior in the Presence of Commercial Electronic Variable Message Signs." Both of those, again, were federal reports that studied things like accident rates, distraction rates of billboard and other similar items. In those reports, and you did hear earlier from the applicant, they provided guidance to what each individual state's DOT could establish in terms of regulations, and provided some, like, basically best practices for states to regulate electronic billboards. Some of the things that they found is that things like moving images, scrolling words, you know, constantly changing the message is very distracting to drivers, which is why the DOT, as you heard from the applicant, prohibits those type of maneuvers, those type those type of visuals. So that is why, in the state of New Jersey, you cannot have a message change any sooner than eight seconds, and again, you can't have any scrolling images. I know in the township, you guys have your own regulation in terms of how often the display could change, and that, again, I believe, is every thirty seconds. So again, will be well beyond even what the federal government and the DOT believes is a safe frequency to change the message of the electronic billboard. In addition, they did look at, and as part of those studies, look at how long someone tends to glance off the road when they're seeing a billboard. This was done basically by eye-tracking technology. They had drivers drive around, you know, like a sample course, and basically measured how often someone was looking away, gazing away, or turning their, or turning their head when when they were in the presence of electronic billboards and static billboards. Essentially, what they found is that there's really no distraction change from a driver behavior perspective between your standard static billboards and the visual bill, and the digital billboards. There were, obviously, some from that study, some cases where the digital billboards actually had less gazing because it was actually a clearer image. So when you're seeing the digital billboard and, you know, it's it's something you could see and understand without, you know, concentrating too closely, because some of the older static billboards are not as clear, especially when it's dark out, the the image sometimes gets washed out from the light throw, and you'll hear later on from the lighting engineer about how our lighting is different than those old standard static billboards. So again, one of the items that is is clear when I do these types of analysis is, besides the fact that FHWA has indicated there's no significant change in accidents from when you have a digital billboard to you having no billboard at all, one of the things that's important is to make sure the digital billboard doesn't necessarily pop out at someone. You don't want this billboard to be something that someone really only sees or has the ability to see for a very short period of time, because that will actually draw their attention to it more than if it's just generally omnipresent near the roadway. So what we did is we prepared this exhibit, which I guess we'll title A two.
Yeah, this was not submitted to the board, so.
Mark it as exhibit A two.
And what this shows, this is an aerial image of the vicinity of the site. At the subject site, which is generally in the middle of the page, there is a red V that represents the billboard, and then there are outer Vs that represent basically the driver's viewing angle as they would be approaching the site. When you're coming southbound to the site, so that would be from the, on the left side of the page, if you notice, if you basically drive from the Acme all the way to basically the Wawa or where the existing billboard is today on the on that side of the road, you're basically climbing a hill. You're climbing a hill about twenty feet over that entire distance from the Acme all the way to this location, and then basically, right when you get to the billboard is when you would have the the existing billboard that's on the other side of the roadway, is when you'll start to see our billboard, because at that point, you've reached the crest of the road, and then you'll basically be able to see our billboard at that location. That's about nine hundred to a thousand feet from the billboard is when you'll start to be able to see it. That means the billboard will be present for about nine to ten seconds of your drive. So it's something that allows you to, you know, be able to notice the image, but doesn't necessarily pull your attention away from the from the angle of the road. necessarily pull your attention away from the, from the angle of the road. When you're coming the other direction, so you're coming northbound now, and this is, so you're coming from near where the Route 18, Route 9 interchange is, that location we're somewhat limited by visibility as it relates to the curvature of the road from a horizontal perspective. The road kind of curves as it goes under Route 18, and then you have pretty heavy vegetation on the right-hand side of the road there. So you'll start to be able to see the billboard just prior to the jug handle ramp that takes you to Spring Valley. At that location, it's about, it's about 700 to 750 feet away from the billboard, which allows you to see the billboard or gives you a viewing time period of seven seconds. Again, you do not look at the billboard for seven seconds. That would be a danger. The DOT and FHWA, they look at the fact that you want to be able to maintain visual view of the roadway for continuously and be distracted from the roadway for no less than basically one and a half seconds. Once you look beyond one and a half seconds off the road, the DOT, the FHWA deems that to be a dangerous condition. So again, what we want to provide is enough time that you could see the sign, but it doesn't draw your attention away from the road. In addition, what we've shown here, and that's what the black lines are showing, the red lines, I mean, that are showing that are kind of spread out, those are basically your general viewing angle. That is what you could see. It's a 20-degree on each direction from vertical that you could see in your normal peripheral vision. So that does not require you to turn your head. You could see everything in the red, notwithstanding any physical obstructions. Obviously, you can't see through buildings, but you could see on that 20-degree angle from either direction while you're in your car without having to turn your head. And again, that's the key here is we do not want drivers having to turn their head in order to see the billboard itself. As you come around to get close to the billboard, because of the billboard's height, it all of a sudden becomes not within your view because you lose the viewing angle from the top of your car. So actually, as you're waiting at the traffic light at this location, you would not have the billboard visible. So in terms of, you know, I've had projects where we've proposed billboards near traffic signals, and there's always a concern. You have lighting for the billboard, you have lighting from the traffic light. There's an over 25-foot separation between, vertically, between the traffic light locations and the billboard itself. And again, as you approach the traffic light, the billboard actually becomes above your car, and you'll no longer be able to see it. So you'll only be able to see the traffic light in front of you. So again, as part of this application, we did review the existing site conditions to ensure that the billboard would be sufficiently viewable, that it would not be distracting the public, but would be just within the normal viewing angles that drivers have along this corridor. We've identified that the billboard would be visible for about 10 seconds heading southbound, generally from where the existing billboard is on the southbound side to about 120 feet away from our billboard. It'll be visible in the southbound direction. In the northbound direction, you'll basically be able to see it right where the lane starts to open up for the jug handle at Spring Valley Road. But again, I would, you know, remind the board that the safety of billboards has been studied at a federal level. They are, the location of them are as much under the jurisdiction of the DOT as it relates to the safety of them. The DOT requires electronic billboards to be no closer than 1,000 feet from one another in the same direction of travel. So while the billboard on the opposite side of the street is about 870 feet away from our, from our billboard, because it's on the other side of the street, it does not, it is not in conflict with the DOT standard of 1,000 feet within the same direction of travel. And the DOT also obviously governs the operational aspects of the billboard in terms of not allowing moving images, scrolling images, and the frequency of the changing of the message. So again, from a safety perspective, this is an application that does satisfy the FHWA standards, and we do have a NJDOT permit because we are consistent with the DOT standards for locating a digital billboard.
All right. Matt, just a couple of follow-ups. So I know you stated that we comply with the DOT standard in terms of the distance requirement because it's measured on the same side of the road.
Correct.
Notwithstanding the fact that we comply with that, can you just give your opinion as to whether you not, you think there's any negative impacts as a result of this proposal being within 875 feet of the other billboard on the other side? Do you see any negative impacts by having them that close together?
No.
Okay. And then in terms of the height of the billboard itself, so as indicated by the planner, we do exceed the height as it would, for the billboard as it would be in other zones. Do you see any negative impacts at this specific location, at this property, for having the height that we're proposing?
No, and again, I think there's a couple of reasons why I think the height here is important. One, again, they, as you're coming in the southbound direction, you're climbing in the road till you get to basically the existing billboard on the opposite side of the street. So there's a grade change of the roadway that's at this general location in terms of, you know, as you're approaching the site in that direction. From the other direction, if you did not have that height, the visibility would be severely limited due to the fact that you have that vegetation located in the jug handle, near the jug handle, and in the area along the right side of the road as you're approaching the site from coming underneath Route 18. And we also want to provide the appropriate separation between our billboard and the existing freestanding sign for the Lukoil.
Okay. And also, just another fact, do you think, are there any residential properties affected by where we're placing the billboard at this location?
No, and again, just to kind of orientate the board, I'm sure the planner will get to it as well, but looking at this image, bottom-left corner of the signal of the intersection, that's a car dealership. You have, to the top-right corner, I think is like a U-Haul rental type of facility. Behind us is kind of a small-scale, kind of industrial, mixed-use type of development with various type of office and small-scale industrial and recreational uses. And as you travel along Route 1 in the northbound direction, you've got a Mavis Tire and other commercial properties. So again, from this image, which goes at least 1,000 feet in every direction, there's no permanent residential structures as shown.
Okay. So just to sum up, so from a civil engineering perspective, you know, there's no negative impacts in your opinion as to the location of the billboard on the property, correct?
Correct. On the property itself, it's located outside of any drive aisles or areas where the vehicles would travel, and it's located significantly far back from the drivers on Route 9 due to the fact that there's a 45-feet distance between the curb and our property line.
Okay. And then from a traffic engineering perspective, using your other hat that you're testifying under, the application meets all the safety requirements and all the DOT regulations and federal regulations that you cited in your testimony?
Again, yes. We looked at the FHWA requirements and their two publications. We have an NJDOT permit. Obviously, it's conditional without having this board's approval, but we've met all of their standards, and they are really the governing body as it relates to ensuring that billboards are safe for roadway travelers. And again, our own, you know, accident stays we've done in the past with billboards, we've found that there's no significant change in accidents with or without a billboard. So whether one's installed, we've compared accident rates from before a billboard's been installed to after it's been installed, and there's really no significant change in accidents. At some locations, it actually goes down. I don't think it's because of the billboard, and in some cases, it may go nominally, again, not because of the billboard itself.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
No comments for me. Thank you.
Mr. Swan?
Mr. Sekler, I just have one question. Did I hear it right that the existing freestanding sign is roughly 28 feet into the air?
Yes, I believe it's about 20.
And it's a pylon sign, right?
Correct.
So you have a 28-foot sign, and then you have another sign towering over it, which is 65 feet. Is that right?
The top of the billboard sign would be 65 feet, the bottom would be 45 feet above.
Have you studied any of the billboard pylon signs along Route 9 within Old Bridge?
I've driven it. I don't have any specific details in terms of what the heights are. I know the one that's, the one that you could almost see within this image on the bottom-left looks to be in the, maybe the 40-foot range or 35-foot range, but again, I didn't, I don't have the resolution to study.
Sure. I just, I just wanted to reiterate on this because the township has an ordinance which limits the height of the billboard signs to 45 feet. The zoning board recently heard an application that that had proposed a billboard sign that was 35 feet. I think in my review memo, I also mentioned another sign that recently got an approval to convert a static sign into an LED sign, which was, again, 45 feet. So something for you to take a look at or revisit because I'm pretty certain you won't conclude tonight, given that there are five members. But I think the height has been a primary concern. I do not believe that in Old Bridge, we have any sign that exceeds that 45-feet limit. Also, when, and you were on all the projects I worked on, so welcome back, but whether it was Regency Center, whether it was SEGME, all the freestanding signs that were approved, designed, or the plans were written for were limited to 30 feet. And you know I have a certain dislike for pylon signs for obvious reasons, but at the same time, knowing that this site is kind of undersized for the zone, it already has a convenience store and a gas station on it, it has a sign that is 28, almost 28 feet high, and you're proposing another billboard. To me, it's a bit of an overutilization of the site, but that's something that you should consider, and maybe when you come back, the height would be a concern to me as well as the board members.
Definitely heard your comment, and I agree. I don't think we're finishing tonight, so obviously take that into consideration.
And I appreciate you being very, you know, direct about your concern, but that's why I also had Mr. Sekler specifically talk about the proposed height that we have and why he didn't think there was any impacts on the surrounding area. But we will take your comments under advisement before the next meeting.
I would also note that the billboard that is on that northbound side, it is basically at the highest point of Route 9 for probably almost a mile in each direction. So that site, that sign, while it may not be physically that high off the ground, you know, it may not be our height above the ground, when you're coming up from the Acme, it is sitting 65 feet up in the air because you're sitting 20 feet lower as you're driving up the hill.
I mean, I get that. I get that. But from a 45-feet, if you were asking me for maybe 48 or 50, I get it, but when you are 20 feet up in the air, higher than what is allowed, it is concerning.
Understood.
Anything else?
I have no further questions for Mr. Sekler.
Let's start on my left, board members. I wrote a couple of things down, but do the math for me on this. The pylon sits at basically 28 feet. It's 27.91.
Yes.
Which sits, and there's a 20-foot billboard by 50 above it, so it'll sit at 65. So it's sitting at about 15 feet higher than the pylon?
Mr. Chairman, let me just clarify one thing because this was in Vena's report, and I forgot to mention this. So the outdoor advertising permit from DOT allows you a 20-by-50 sign, but, so that's what we put on the, on the plans, but the actual, this actual one is, is actually 14 by 48. So I just wanted to make that clear. And she noted that discrepancy on a few of the plans, so it is 14 by 48.
So how high above the pylon is the bottom?
Right. So doing the math, I'm going back to the 20-foot because it's easier math, and then we'll go back from that. So 65 minus 28, 23-feet difference between.
Above.
Above, yes. And again, if it's, yeah, if we go to a 14-foot sign, that'll be about 29 feet above. So I understand there is some room there, it seems like, for range.
Matt, can I?
Go right ahead.
Just a question, and this is just me thinking out loud. Would the gas station sign, would you, would you reconsider shrinking that size, creating a nicer monument sign, and then having a billboard? Because to me, when you're in your car and you see a 28-foot-high sign, and then above that, there is another sign towering it, it is, it is a bit too much, but something for you to think.
Yeah, we couldn't answer that now, but.
I get that, but something for you to consider.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Swan?
That's it.
All right. I also wrote down about, when you were speaking about the traffic concerns of accidents, and you say that there's no difference whether it's at an intersection, at or on or about at an intersection, or if it would be midway down the road. I'm concerned that it sits at an intersection, and you're saying that there's no difference in that because the people that are, at what distance, how many car lines? Obviously, the traffic backs up there both ways, coming out, if you were coming northbound on 9, or if you're going southbound, particularly in the evening hours, and the traffic goes in reverse. So at what point does that sign disappear from my view?
Right. So if you're going southbound, the billboard sits, you know, I think it's about 150 feet back of the stop bar. So obviously, you're past the billboard, it's behind you, you know, let's say the last six, the first six cars, they can't see it because the billboard's behind them. Then the next six or seven cars, that billboard is out of sight because it's basically above them. It's above the roof of their cars. So you're talking about 12 cars or so would not be able to see the billboard at all when they're waiting at the traffic light.
The first 12.
The first 12 in that direction.
And then what about the, what about the 13th?
The 13th.
Which normally causes the rerun accidents.
So again, the, let's say the 13th car or so, the billboard would be significantly to their, basically out their side window at that point and not in front of them.
If you were going northbound?
If you're going southbound. So now if you're going.
Just south, and I'll do north next.
Okay. So that, that's the southbound direction is that you basically, it's also, you know, significantly separated from your flow of traffic in the southbound direction. Northbound direction, now we're flipping around the other way. I actually think the benefit here is that as the drivers come around, and this is where I wish I had a board and I could physically point to it, as you're coming around, coming underneath Route 18, coming through this corridor here, you're basically facing kind of to the left, and the billboard is off to your right. So the billboard is not over, again, the traffic lights in any way, it's basically, again, off to the right. But similar to what you were questioning, how many cars back, the first two, three cars in that direction would not be able to see it. Then you would be able to see it kind of out your right.
Because it's a deceleration ramp coming from 18, coming from, coming from 18 north that loads onto Route 9 at that intersection.
Yes.
And that intersection comes up rather quickly.
Correct. If, if it's not full of traffic, yes.
Yeah. Well, a heavy load of traffic, it would. That site, that comes into view rather quickly and disturbingly so, if that thing is right there in the intersection. Was there any ever, any study done about that at the approach? I know you're saying that it doesn't come into people's window view.
Correct.
Because it's too tall for the window.
That's one of the benefits of the, I would, again, I would have a bigger issue if the billboard was down at, let's say, 20 feet, and you're basically looking through a traffic light at an image. That's where I would have concerns with a digital image. Again, if you're looking through a light and you have a green light or a red light in front of you, and you're trying to decipher that with a, you know, Joe the plumber, call me if you have a flood issue, you know, in the background, because the sign is significantly separated both horizontally and vertically, I think it's a better location here, and I don't have that concern with signal, with it being close to the signal. I have worked on probably a handful of other sites that have been corner lots like this, you know, whether it's a Dunkin' Donuts, a fast food restaurant, a convenience store with gas. And similarly, we ensured when we were designing them that we had vertical and horizontal separation, that it was not basically in the background of the light, and it, there's, basically, it's off to the side of the light.
You said the DOT distance from the other billboard, what is the DOT set at, under 1,000?
They do not allow for billboards on the same side of the roadway within 1,000 feet.
Okay. And the ordinance here is 2,000 in between, right?
The ordinance here is different than the DOT standard.
I understand.
The ordinance.
I understand. I said the DOT said.
DOT standard is 1,000 feet on the same side. You have a, an ordinance that doesn't matter what side you're on. It's 2,000 feet within another billboard.
And I would say on yours, on this side of the roadway, there's nothing within 2,000 feet. But again, your definition doesn't.
I agree. I know that there is not.
Yep.
What's the distance between this proposed billboard and the other one?
The one near the Wawa on the opposite side? I think it's 875 feet.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else with any other questions?
I just have a concern. Spring Valley Road and Texas Road, there is a three-car lane, and then it goes down to two in a bottleneck. That's my only concern. With that sign up there with the two signs, one on top of the other, it's going to be a distraction like the way Vena was saying, that can comprise it down to one or make it more feasible, like, like design style or something, because if I'm coming down there, and these cars are barreling down, and it's a known area for accidents, both Spring Valley and Texas Road are known for this. You're going from three lanes down to two, and all of a sudden, you're going to hit, boom, you're going to get in an accident because you're looking at something up above you. That's my concern.
Understood. And again, I think we'll take Vena's recommendations into consideration, and we'll see what we design when we come back.
The monuments, the pylon sign that's there at 28, I mean, the ordinance here on normal signs is 18. It might be something to consider. Just a thought, throw it out, maybe you and your people could work on that. On my left again, because I think we're going to dismiss this witness. Counselor?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have reached, we're coming up on the 40-minute, 45-minute mark.
Yeah, I was going to say too, because if we are going to make modifications based on the comments we've heard, I'd want the lighting expert to testify with whatever's going to actually be proposed to.
So I'm going to ask you to make this your last witness then?
Yes.
I do have to open up a public portion as well.
That's fine, of course, of course.
Before you open it up to public, I just want to offer, if your team wants to meet with us for a technical review meeting to go over, I'll be more than happy to meet with you guys. You can reach out to Maureen. I know my schedule is really packed, but she'll, that's why she's laughing, but she'll try to squeeze something in for a virtual meeting.
No, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Mr. Sekler, it was a great presentation, and you put forth a lot of great information, Mr. Sackler, it was a great presentation, and you put forth a lot of great information, and your eyesight is amazing, because you can read that.
It's not that good.
Okay.
I just memorized what's on there.
You could have got away with it, you didn't have to admit to that. I'm going to open up a public portion on this, and if people are going to speak on this matter, I'm going to ask you to be brief and concise. You have to deal with the issue of what the testimony was, not what you may think should happen or shouldn't happen, but that's what we'd be discussing. Please don't be repetitive, if, I don't know that anybody's coming up, but if there's a lot of people going to come up, please don't be repetitive. Somebody asked a question prior to you, please don't ask the same one. I don't know about this application, we normally don't limit time, but Counselor, could we limit a four-minute?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's going to be a four-minute cap on all public comment and testimony from the public.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone want to be heard? Let me, this is, let me call it in, forty-seven dash twenty-two-four Z for the V sign billboard located at the intersection, basically the intersection of Nine and just north of Spring Hill Road.
All right, before we begin, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes, sir.
Please state your names, bear your last for the record.
Nina Jochnowitz, J-O-C-H-N-O-W-I-T-Z.
And your address.
Two zero three West Greystone Road, Old Bridge, New Jersey.
Make it a while.
I'm coming here as a wildlife rehabber here in Old Bridge. I am licensed by the state of New Jersey. Do I need to give my permit number?
Four...
I don't know, I'm just asking. Okay. I do have a question about this, and it's regarding light pollution and migratory, the United Statesian Migratory Bird Act, federal laws. You're talking about a lighting that's going to go up sixty-five feet into eleven o'clock at night, and I do have concerns about this. Now, I know that you're the lighting engineer, I'm not sure he hasn't spoken yet, however, is this an appropriate time to ask this question, Chairman?
Well, they are going to, we've been told they are going to present a light specialist who's going to probably speak to more to your issue.
Okay, because I am very concerned, because it's very tall, and we do have a lot of woodlands, we have a lot of migratory birds that come through our town still, and hopefully forever. And that said, I'm not sure if this gentleman here, who did very good presentation, would like to answer some of this at this time.
I think he'll probably be here, Counselors, is the engineer going to be here at the next meeting?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, so we know in advance, but I think having the lighting expert testify first, then be able to be responsive, see, would probably be the best way to go.
Fine, and next meeting is?
Well, we haven't gotten to that to that point.
Oh, I thought it was part of this, okay, sorry, sir.
No, 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 it'll be another date.
That's what I'm asking, yes, another date.
It will be set for another date, yeah.
Okay.
You'll hear it in a few minutes, when we finish the public portion. Anyone else want to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand. Counselor, I see none, you see any?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to close the public portion. Let's get a date for continuance.
January eighth.
Counselor? Let me just check, hold on.
And professionals? Is that reorg?
Yes.
Hold on one second.
Are you available on January eighth?
I'm going to develop, the only thing I've been told is that we have a rather booked out beginning of the year. January eighth is the reorg meeting, too.
Yeah, my lighting consultant just said he was unavailable that day anyway, so do you want to go to another, the next meeting?
I, well, I think that's what Ms. Swant is looking at right now.
Our agendas might be booked through June.
Yeah, that's, I think the first half of the year is... All right. For those here in the room, what we're trying to decide is the professionals have to pick a date that they're willing to be available to come back into our meetings in 2026. So it'll just be a moment, thank you.
All right, we'll take it, fine, we'll take it. February nineteenth, yeah. Okay, we'll take it. February nineteenth, Jersey. It also gives us more time if we're going to make revisions to go.
Absolutely. What was the date, Ms. Swant?
February nineteenth.
February nineteenth?
Yes.
That's okay, Counselor?
Yes.
And you'll sign?
Yeah, yeah, if there's a need for me to sign an extension, that's fine, but we'll extend through the end of February, that's fine.
Wonderful.
This matter, ergon concepts, forty-seven dash twenty-two-four Z, is going to be put on the schedule for February nineteenth. There will be no further notice at this point.
Twenty-two-six, seven-thirty PM in this room?
Seven-thirty, does start with the reorg, though.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Sackler, thank you, and thank you, Counselor.
February nineteenth? The matter's being carried to February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, without the need for further notice.
Twenty-two-six.
Twenty-two-six. I'm going to mess that up a couple of times.
It's that time of year. All right, we have to switch stenographers, so I'm going to ask for a quick recess, we're going to go off TV. Excuse me, we have come back from recess. Ms. Porcelli, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Izzo?
Here.
Mr. Scagno?
President.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Swant?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Thank you. The next application is twelve-dash twenty-two-five Z, it's T A R Properties, Zone R-15 Medium Density Residential Block One Seven Zero Zero Four Lot One One Point One One. Physical location is four-seven-five Marlborough Road in Old Bridge. It's for a training facility for electronic vehicle repair. Applicant proposes a minor site improvements. Permeable driveway connecting parking lot to rear-facing bay door, change use to training facility as described above. They're seeking major preliminary and final site plan with devariance. Thomas Garlick, Esquire, representing the applicant, sir.
Thank you, Chair. I'll make sure you can hear me. Good evening, Chair members of the Board. Chair pretty much summarized my opening, so I appreciate it. Thomas Garlick from Murphy, Schiller &amp; Wilkes, on behalf of the applicant, T A R Properties Two, LLC. We're here seeking preliminary and final major site plan, which is by definition, but really, we have very, I think, minor site improvements that are before you today. As the Chair mentioned, we're looking at a rear-facing driveway that's permeable material that will allow our client to move vehicles in and out of the garage based toward the rear of the property. As the Chair mentioned, the applicant is proposing an EV repair training facility business, essentially like a very, very small Lincoln Tech facility that is just going to provide education for techs looking to do repairs on electronic vehicles. Just to provide the Board with a little bit of summary of the use and the operation, the vehicles on site are going to be supplied by the manufacturers. This is not something where someone's going to bring their broken-down vehicle and offer it for repair, it's something that's essentially a vehicle by Rivian or Lucid, something like that, so that the techs, or the to-be techs can learn on a new vehicle what to do. The school will be operating typical business hours, looking at eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, so this is just a regular weekday operation. At the largest, we're expecting eighteen students on site. It's typically classes of six, they may overlap a little bit, but at max, we're looking at eighteen students on site at a given time with three instructors. So we're looking at twenty-one, roughly twenty-one people on site at a given time at the maximum. Operations will be limited solely to the interior, there's nothing going on on the outside, there won't be any storage on the outside. There might be three or four vehicles that are being used as subjects for the lessons, they'll be stored on the interior in the garage area of the site, and they'll be moved in and out again through that driveway in the rear. There'll be testimony to this effect, but I'm just giving you a quick summary. In terms of witnesses, we do have four total witnesses, but in terms of the time limitations tonight, and I appreciate that we had the opportunity to get started tonight, we're just going to be anticipating our engineer to go over our site plan, as well as our architect to provide you with the proposed floor plan. Then we'll come back with our traffic engineer and our planner for the additional testimony, when that's available. Other than that, we're in receipt of the October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five forestry report, as well as the Board Planning, Engineering and Traffic Report dated December first, twenty-twenty-five, and we're happy to discuss that. If the Board doesn't have any questions, I noticed, I believe, is in order, I would just ask the Board.
Lorelei Totten, T is in Tom, O-T-T-E-N, Crest Engineering Associates, Inc., Millstone Township, New Jersey. I have a professional engineering license in New Jersey that is in effect and has been since 1983. The Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I have worked for Crest Engineering for 30, almost 32 years.
Certainly, we accept Ms. Totten's credentials. She's appeared here on numerous occasions over the years that I've sat here. She's an expert in her field, and we certainly recognize that. You in the audience, this is a professional engineer that'll be testifying next.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Totten, I know you brought an exhibit with you today, I think, to orient the board. I'd like to mark it as A1, and then have you identify what the document is.
Yes, this is an aerial taken from near map image that was dated October 1, 2025. And it shows, and it shows the, in a white rectangle, the site, and then dashed line is approximately 200 feet around, to give you an idea of where the site is situated. And you can see that it's, shall I just continue?
Yeah, yes, please.
Thank you. It's, as you can see, it's located between Marlborough Road, which is a county road, and Route 18, which is a state highway, not too far north of Birch Street, and the corner of it lines up with First Place. It is in a residential district, as was noted. There are other, some other commercial uses in the area, which will be testified to later on. My job tonight is to explain to you what we want to do to the site. So if maybe we could move to the variance plan? Sheet three, I believe? Thank you. So with regard to the existing conditions, it is Lot 11.11. I love numbers like that. Sorry, Lot 11.11, Block 17004. It contains approximately 54,000 square feet. And I did note in the letter that we have about a 94-square-foot difference between the survey and the site plan. The survey would be correct. Marlborough Road, Route 70 and Route 18, as I said, are on either side of the site. We are here, or actually, this site plan and use variance for the dance studio was approved in November 2000 and was occupied by about 2005. It is an existing building with 8,278 square feet on the first floor and 1905 square feet on the second floor. There is a single, oh.
Sheet three.
Three, thank you. And a single entrance off, entrance/exit. Yes, thank you. Off of Marlborough Road, which is located right in this area where the stop bar is. I don't know, which one of these boards would be easier for?
I think for the audience, and I think the board members can see this one.
Okay, thank you. Marlborough Road across the top of the screen, Route 18 across the bottom, and there's a resident side of the property. It is, as you could see from the aerial before, it is wooded along, between the parking lot and the property line, and between the parking lot and Route 18. And there, so it contains 23 parking spaces. My cover sheet is wrong, it says 26, my apologies. 23 parking spaces, two ADA spaces in the corner of the parking lot, a drop-off area in the front. There is a detention basin that surrounds it on two and a half sides with an outfall down by Marlborough Road that ties into the Marlborough Road drainage system. Currently, there is an overflow consisting of a riprap apron that overflows through the middle and down the slope into Route 18. There are existing facilities, as you would imagine, water, sewer, electric, et cetera, to the site because it's been in operation for, I don't know, 20 years, 15 years. And all of the facilities my site visit appear to be in reasonable condition. However, should any feature be not in the best of repair or be less than acceptable condition, it will be repaired in accordance with Township Ordinance's regulations. There are no floodplains on the site. There is a possibility of, there's a ditch along Route 18. There is a possibility of some associated wetlands along this area. I did have my wetlands expert go look today, and he thinks that there might be some, but it was a very quick look. Since we will be heard again, we'll try to find that a little bit better prior to the next meeting. And of course, should you approve the application, we would definitely determine the status of those wetlands and whether or not any permits would be needed. The, so I'm going to talk about the zoning very briefly. A use variance was obtained for the original use of a dance studio. And use variance, usually, all of the setbacks and so on are subsumed into it. But what I do really want to say here is that we are not changing any bulk front, side, or rear yard setbacks. We're not changing the building coverage, and we're not changing the impervious coverage. And you say, how can we do that when we're putting in that little drive? So the proposal is, as you heard, to convert this dance studio into a place for technicians to learn how to repair motor vehicles. So what we, we don't need to change anything about the layout of the parking lot. What we do need to do is figure out how to get the cars into the rear of the building where the demonstrations occur. So what we, we took very careful consideration of this because we wanted to not increase the impervious cover. We wanted to impact the site as little as possible. So we put in a driveway or an accessway, and it goes through the handicap space and the handicap accessible aisle that's located in the direction where I have my pointer pointing. So what we're using is this GeoCell product that contains, it constrains and contains stone so that it makes like gravel, but it doesn't move around like gravel does. It stays put, and it has a lot of strength. It's intended to use in parking areas where you don't want to put down asphalt or concrete. So we thought this would be a good use for that. The same company, so we had to raise the ground a little here because it slopes off. And as I noted before, there's a bit of the detention basin that extends, it's the highest part, upstream part of the detention basin, where the overflow into Route 18 is located here. So we are doing a minimal amount of excavation, or proposing, in the part of the detention basin, putting, proposing to put in a wall made out of these Preston cell, which is, again, a constrained combination of stone and cells that, should you want to, you can actually make it look green because there's places to put pockets of soil in it. So it's a fairly natural-looking result. So what we've done is, this detention basin here had a certain volume in it, up to the 100-year flood elevation where it leaves the outlet structure. So we added enough volume by doing some excavation in this area to make the volume the same, so that the system will operate the same. And since this, even though it's raised a little bit, it still drains in the same direction as the original area behind the building did. So we're maintaining all of the existing characteristics of the original drainage. We're not increasing the impervious cover, but we are able to make a connection for the, our E Vs to be brought into the building. So you're, in reading the professionals' letter, they had a great idea. You only need one handicap space based on the number of parking spaces that are there. We also need an E V space. So what we, and they suggested maybe eliminating one of the spaces. So what I would like to do is eliminate one, and because we have enough parking spaces at 23, go down to 22, and stripe this off so that this whole area in front of the access is striped, which would minimize any kind of conflict between somebody parking in that space and bringing the vehicles in and out. Of course, that could be managed anyway because you just don't do it when there's somebody in that spot. And then, put in a ready, make-ready E V station with two, a double one with two charging ports on the line between the regular space and the handicap accessible space, and therefore, you're putting in availability for two places to charge and one for a handicap accessible space, somebody that might need that. So, and I didn't look at the ordinance to see if Old Bridge changed it, but for purposes of parking counts, those two spaces, what each count is four spaces. So in essence, we lose one and we gain two, so we're at 24 spaces for purposes of meeting the parking ordinance. See if I covered everything. Oh, so some of the other items I'd like to discuss would be, as this road is a county road up here, and should you grant approval, we will make application to the county, so we would be guided by the county on what kind of improvements might be needed up along here. We are hoping that they won't insist on sidewalk because there are a number of trees along here that installing the sidewalk may damage, but we would investigate that with the county and, of course, coordinate with your professionals on that. There's been a request for site triangles. I think that because there's a very wide shoulder here, and you start looking at the site triangle, site distance 14 feet off of the drivable area of the road, that the light, sun, I can talk tonight, the line of sight will be within the right-of-way of the property, but we would be happy to investigate that as well. Let's see. There was a comment about lighting, very good question. So I was really concentrating on the fact that this is an existing parking lot with existing lighting. There's a bit of a concern about the lighting behind the building. Well, there happens to be a light pole right here, which does cast light in this area. And then, we will, all doors have to have lights over the top of them, just for security purposes, so I believe that that would be able to be handled. And for the most of the year, it's light at the end of these classes, and I'm pretty sure that the vehicles need to be in before the beginning of the class, so I don't feel that there's a problem with light. But of course, we would coordinate with your professional staff on that. With regard to landscaping, we weren't really proposing any new landscaping because it is pretty well landscaped already. There may be three or four trees that may have to come down to accommodate our access. And of course, we would request a tree removal permit to remove those trees. Finally, with regard to outside agencies, this area right here is, that we're disturbing, is under 5,000 square feet. So it's, and just so you know, that's less than a tenth of the area of the lot itself. So it's a very small area that we're impacting with the reuse of this existing and currently vacant building. So we don't need Free Whole Soil Conservation District approval. However, of course, we would show silt fence in here because that's the only responsible thing to do. And fortunately for the construction, they've got the parking lot, so they, I believe that there wouldn't be any soil that would be taken out onto the street. And then, of course, I already mentioned Middlesex County Planning Board, and the other, I think we may have to coordinate with the water and sewer people to show them that we're not increasing any of the uses over what was there in the past. And possibly D E P, which I'm hoping not when we go through and investigate this area a little further. And that is, I think, the sum of what I can tell you about this project because it doesn't have a lot of engineering to it.
We're going to put one of those E V chargers in here for all the stenographers. Swipe your card and.
Counselor? So Ms. Totten, I just want to ask you a couple of questions that come from the engineering planning report that we received from the board. I always think I'm too loud. There's a question as to, I believe, a shed and a fence, that kind of meander or cross over the property line. As far as we know, there's no easement for either of those encroachments, correct?
That's correct. The owner, who would probably say something about this when he comes up, he is not unhappy that they have the fence over the line and the shed, and doesn't feel he wants to make them take it off. If you feel that an easement to them would be beneficial, we could work that out.
I think the shed is blocked by landscaping at this point. It's not even really observable from the site, correct?
And the fence is right in that area.
We'll defer to our counsel on that matter and professionals.
I think, just, I just wanted to quickly note, that was more of an informational comment. I think the way it was worded was, we were more just looking to see if there was anything, and it was more of just to bring it to your attention. It's a private property matter, so that's all.
Thank you. There's five air conditioning units that are in the area of the two driveway, the bay, or in the driveway and the two bay doors. Your understanding from the applicant is that he's going to move those units either into the U shape between the two doors, if possible, or keep some in place and then move some to the other side of the left-side driveway? Is that correct?
Yes. I believe we only have to move two of them in order to accommodate the driveways, and they could just. Hey, Mike?
Hold on one second of the tech, take a look.
Is this, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just want to confirm for the record, we have no ingress or egress off of State Route 18, correct?
While you're looking, I will say, we, there are a few stormwater comments and housekeeping comments in the review letter, and I had the opportunity to speak with the preparer of the letter, and I think we can work with it and come up with the answers to all the stormwater questions, which aren't difficult. And the housekeeping items are just, a couple of things got turned off on the layers. We can take care of all of that, so I'm comfortable with the engineer's letter.
That's fine by me. I think the only item I was going to ask is if we can supply the board professionals with information as to the GeoWeb to show that it's rated properly for the types of vehicles that the applicants told you will be operating or traveling on the driveway. Is that correct?
Yes.
You're comfortable with it?
Yes, we can provide specification sheets of the wall and the granular pavement surface. It's not as common as, like, Allen Block and some of the other more common products. But it's a good product, and I've been told that the walls last 100 years.
I won't be around to confirm that, but.
Me neither.
Chair, I don't have any other questions for this witness.
Mr. McCarthy?
Oops, sorry. Just some more housekeeping things, just to quickly run through it. So as far as how students are going to get to the site, is it just, are we assuming that they're going to drive, some kind of carpooling, busing?
I mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry. My client will either testify tonight, if there's time, I'm looking at my watch.
Okay.
Or at the next meeting, just to provide some additional operational questions, and he'll hit on that one.
Okay. The other one that I had, and so I know that there's no access on Route 18. I think we were just concerned as far as how the construction's going to operate because we're right on the property line, so you'll probably need some kind of construction access permit from them. So just, if there was any conversations with them yet, or just if, you know, what So, just if there was any conversations with them yet, or just if, you know, what the status of that would be.
So, with regard to that, I think it would be a much better idea for me to push that outlet structure a little bit away from the property line so that that takes that off the table.
Okay. Let me see here.
And what he was talking about is the little, the outlet structure here. It is a bubbler inlet, I think I said that, I'm not certain. But it's, I can push it a little closer to the driveway so that you don't have to cross the property line to construct. I think that makes life simpler.
Yes, yeah, that would, that would be excellent. I think one of the stormwater questions, just to get it on the record, major stormwater project with New Jersey with DEP, just confirming from some of our previous conversation that the property received approval prior to February of 2004.
Yes, it did. It received its approval in 2000. And actually, it was under construction, my company got involved in about April when it was under construction because there were some, some issues with trying to get the CFO. So, I know for a fact that it was well under construction by that time. So, therefore, because there's less than a quarter acre, new impervious is actually none, then, and the area of disturbance is less than an acre, it is not a major project.
And I think the only other one, just to make it a little bit clearer, so with the site lighting that's going to be added, if we could get some kind of lighting plan just to show what those foot candles are. I understand that for, I would say, 10 months out of the year, it's going to be operating during hours where there is light. But at like right now, 4:30, it kind of starts to get dark. So, just to make sure that there are no issues. Or we could do like a nightlight field test to confirm it after the fact.
I would be happy to do either one, but the nightlight is a good idea.
Okay. That's all that I have, thank you.
Ms. Swan.
I don't have any questions for Laura. I think I'll reserve all my questions for the planner.
Operational, we're going to have someone come and tell us a little bit more of.
Yes.
Walk the board around.
Yes.
In that, in that matter, what's going to happen there.
Yes.
And for the record, you're not altering the footprint of the building whatsoever?
Not, not one iota.
Okay. And you also said that there may be a possibility of wetland being out towards 18. You're not going to disturb any of that area either?
No.
Or you're going to identify it if it is there?
Yes.
Okay. But you're not going anywhere near it?
Correct.
Okay. And onsite parking, obviously, you're going to have, I think, three extra spots as it turns out.
Yes, and Mr. Ray from McDonough Ray will be here to describe that in more detail.
And this is clearly a electric car teaching school.
Yes.
So, there'll be no mechanical sounds, there won't be any engine sounds of combustion?
Correct.
I'm going to go to my, board on my left, we can start then with Ms. Gomez. That's okay.
I have a question, being that it's going to be an electronic teaching school.
Laura, you have to put that right in front.
Sorry.
Directional.
Being that it's going to be an electronic teaching school, are there going to be high-power charges, you know, for the, for the batteries and things like that that make noise?
I'm sorry to defer that question to the owner of the project. He will be able to tell you in very specific detail.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Spinel.
I'm good.
Mr. Scogna. Mr. Rizzo's good? I'm good. You've got about 15, 20 minutes left.
We could, yeah, we don't, we don't anticipate our architect taking that long for a director.
You've got 20 minutes left.
I know what I want for Christmas. Everybody's going electronic on me. I'm telling my staff tomorrow.
Ms. Totten, thank you for your testimony.
Let me just get this under the chair before I make a fool of myself here.
Are we back on? We good?
Yes. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Please state your name and spare your last for the record.
Charles P. Dietz, D-I-E-T-Z, managing member of the Dietz Partnership LLC Architects.
What are you, counselor?
Mr. Dietz, you want to just provide the board with the benefit of your educational background, your credentials?
I have a bachelor's of architecture degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, New Jersey School of Architecture, 43 years ago. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey as well as 13 other states for the past 36 years, and my licenses are current and in good standing.
Thank you. For those in the, we're going to accept his credentials, obviously. For those in the audience, if you're interested, this man is a licensed architect within the state of New Jersey and he's going to testify as to that.
Sir, thank you. Mr. Dietz, if you could just take the board through the plans that your firm prepared.
Yes, I have two plans that are before you that were submitted previously, a floor, floor plan sheet and then an exterior elevation sheet. As Ms. Totten testified, limited engineering, I have even more limited architecture. The only thing that involved me on the exterior of the building is I had to specify the two overhead doors that are going to be installed at the rear of the building. And we've had a structural engineer look at it because we have to provide a new header detail because these doors are, are, you know, big enough to let a car drive in. So, that's just not your standard lintel. So, he's actually already engineered this so if we get approval, we can move right into that phase. So, that's the only thing I'm involved with on the exterior. What I'm here to talk about, I guess at a little larger scale than Ms. Totten's site plan, is we have an existing first floor. And as she mentioned, this is her drive aisle that brings the cars into the building. We're basically reusing almost all the walls that are there today from when it was a dance studio, main entrance at the front if you're coming in, bathrooms, small office, one of the three classrooms, there'll be two classrooms on the second floor that's existing and one classroom on the first floor. That's where you might get the six to seven people with a teacher sitting in the classroom style, looking at manuals, looking at things like you would in any educational facility. And then what you see here is we have two training rooms that are about the same size, opposite of each other. This lower training room actually does have one of the overhead doors that'll allow a vehicle to come in. And what I'm being told is that is where it'll be estimated of what has to be done as it comes in before any work or testing on it is done. That will be in this space. Then this other doorway will allow multiple vehicles to be brought in and it will actually be segregated into three different areas, each one doing something very specific on the electric vehicle. Something will be done in this area and again, the applicant will be able to speak more in detail. Once it finishes here, it might move over to this spot, they'll do something else to the vehicle at that location. Again, something here and then the third spot, I think, might be the calibration area if I remember correctly. There's welding, calibration, testing, all that will go and the vehicle will just move through and then can come back out and leave the building as necessary. As was mentioned, if there's two different manufacturers that they're talking to, then they could move either another one in on another day. But that's how the vehicle will come in and enter and basically all that work will be done on the first floor. If you go to my next slide or page, so this is the existing second floor. Again, we have two classroom areas on the second floor, a utility room and the other classroom and then a bathroom as well. And again, that'll be more for the teaching of the technicians when they're sitting there in a classroom style by one of the training facility advisors. So, it's pretty simple. Like I said, we only had to move a couple of walls on this floor. The good news is we were able to reuse as much as possible of the structure interior and exterior of the existing building. And the biggest challenge on the outside was making sure my engineer could get a header in to cover the size of the width of these doors, which are wider than like a normal residential garage door. But he was able to do it. He went out and had a site visit, that's actually the detail. And we're going to be able to slip a header in there if and when we get approved and which will allow us to put these oversized garage doors in. So, really, I think it's a very simple project architecturally. Once the use is good, everything is almost in place as we need it today. And I think our planner and the applicant will give you more detail on that, but that's really very minimal scope for myself as the architect. I've known the applicant for years, I've done some of his other facilities. So, that's really why I was brought on him, a face and person that he's known for 15, 20 years on his other, other car spaces.
Mr. Dietz, there's a question, I don't know if you can answer this, or this might be a question for the operator. There's a question as to whether or not the doors, the bay doors that are proposed, will have any kind of alarm or make any noise when they go up and down? Are you aware of whether or not those, that kind of door would have that or require that?
It'll have minimal noise. I mean, they're big enough that they're going to be electronics so that they, as opposed to someone sitting there and trying to pull the chain up and lift a tall door like that. But I mean, you'll have more noise, let's say, coming off of Route 18 than what these two doors would ever emit once they're in the opening and closing mode.
And it's not going to be operated like a service center where cars are going in and out regularly?
Correct.
Those are really just to bring cars at once?
Right, they'll bring the vehicles in that maybe that morning, they'll work all day on them and then they'll stay closed. Obviously, in the winter and summer months, you don't want that hot or cold air coming in. And then if they have to leave when they move to the next, either manufacturer or another day's classroom, they'll open the doors and close. So, if it's two or three times a day, one in the morning, one at night and maybe one in the middle, that's probably all that's going to work for, for these doors. And the fact that they're facing Route 18, the truck traffic on Route 18 is going to emit a lot more ambient noise than these doors would ever emit.
Okay. But there's no plan for an alarm or anything, or need for an alarm?
No, he'll probably have a security system because I've done his, his body shop buildings and obviously they have expensive cars with expensive parts. And someone knows about that, then yes, they could be candidates. But he's a very security-oriented owner and is familiar with that and how to protect his investments of his cars and all his parts. So, I'm sure he will have a full alarm system for security if someone were to try to break in and steal either the cars or any of the parts that go with these expensive cars.
There's a question on signage. I know we're not proposing any kind of signage right now, but if there's anticipated signage, if you've spoken with the applicant on that, could you just provide the board with a little bit of information?
Yes, what, what he's thinking of, because it's really his place and what they might want to do on the front door, if you go back to the first page, please, what he's hearing from the two electric vehicle manufacturers, they have a logo. They might want to just like place a vinyl letter logo on the front door that faces the street. So, obviously, it's small if it's fitting on a three-foot by seven-foot door, but that would identify either if it was a Lucid or, you know, whoever Rivian type person. And I believe I've been told by the civil engineer that there might be an existing small monument, existing sign out by the street. So, if we go to reuse that, we would not even change it. We would just change the name if it says Dance Studio and we would put one of the logos on that. But it would not be new, it would stay in place and we reuse the structure in any electric that might be there at this time.
I don't, I don't have any further questions for this witness.
Mr. McCarthy?
Sure. The only one I have, and again, it might be better for the operator, just, just wanted to confirm, put it on the record, if all repairs for the EV vehicles, all the work that's going to be done is going to be interior, nothing will be done outside?
I'd leave it for him, but I think what Ms. Totten spoke about is we're not proposing to bring cars out in the parking lot and work on them in any way outside of the building.
I'll, I'll say that, but we'll, we'll have the operator testify to that too.
No problem.
It's all going to be interior.
Thank you.
Just one, just one question, comment. Any proposed sign will comply with the signage ordinance of the township?
Correct.
And you will ensure that before you file the permits?
Correct. And they would come in with their signed person if they do that and they would fill out a normal zoning application to get a sign approved for a building like you would normally do on any other building in town.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. I'm going to start on my left. Ms. Gomez?
No questions.
Ms. Spinel. Mr. Scogna. Mr. Rizzo. As an architect, let me ask you a question. You're not changing the structure of the building?
Correct.
I don't know what it's made of. Will, will noise emanate beyond the walls of the building?
It should not. It's an insulated building, so that'll help both for thermal and for noise transmission. And again, the fact that we're putting electrical vehicles in there, if you've ever driven an electrical, electric vehicle, they are extremely quiet while they're turned on. So, unlike a combustion engine, you don't hear it when you start it up, you don't hear it while it's on and you don't hear it when you shut it off. So, again, we're not doing anything, we're not doing oil changes or putting it up on crazy things to take the car apart. It's really just to look at all the parts of it and how do we fix it when it's been brought in from a dealership or from a patron at some point? Because it's so modern and technologically, you know, clean, they just need to train the next group of people that can fix these types of cars.
And also considering noise, I think you already mentioned those, the roll-up doors, obviously the electronic, they would make little noise and if any, it's directed out towards Route 18.
Correct.
And counsel, would they agree as a condition that there would be no understanding of any mechanical work being done in the parking lot, only on, onsite?
Absolutely. So, yeah, all mechanical work done interior.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir, Mr. Dietz.
I'll play with this some more.
Yeah. You going to propose any, any other witness tonight? You got, I can give you 10 minutes.
Yeah, so we'll bring up the operator.
It might be good, it might be perfect just to finish up, or at least try and tie it together here.
No problem.
All right, sir, please raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and spare your last for the record.
Gerald McNeese, M-C-N-E-E.
Take it away.
Thank you. Mr. McNeese, you are a member of the applicant?
Yes.
And the applicant owns the property?
I do.
And it's your intention to open up the proposed business of the, the technical training facility for EV vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. The board had, professionals had submitted a, a letter that had a number of operational questions. I just want to take you through them and provide that information to the board. And someone's probably going to have to refresh my memory as to the operational questions that you had asked, so I apologize if I missed them. But let's just confirm for the chair, I know that it's just a condition we agreed to, but there, there's going to be no repairs done to any vehicles on the exterior of the building?
Yeah, there'll be no repairs outside the, the facility itself in the parking lot and, and I could clarify, there are not going to be damaged vehicles. These will be vehicles that would essentially be guinea pigs. And what I mean by a guinea pig, it's a fully assembled vehicle. And these guys will actually be going through the motions on how to calibrate a vehicle, how to pull a battery out, how to pull a panel off. It's not a vehicle that's damaged, other than maybe the estimating bay, and that's yet to be determined. But even in the estimating bay itself there, and I could clarify, the three rooms, the estimating bay itself there, it's just a vehicle. And basically, we could just determine, okay, we're going to replace this panel, repair this panel and paint this panel and they'll be needed to write a proper estimate on that. So, it's not going to be like, I currently own a, a facility that we fix vehicles, it's just completely opposite.
And I, I provided the board with a summary earlier, but the typical business hours right now are approximately 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's, that's going to be typical of the business?
Yes.
And it's Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Okay. And we provided the board before with confirmation that at any given time, the most number of students that's going to be onsite is 18?
Yes. Essentially, what's going to happen is there's no guarantees that they will hold three training sessions at the same time. You'll have a bonding and riveting room, you're going to have a calibration room and you're going to have an estimating room. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be able to host three seminars at the same, or three classes at the same time. But yes, it's, it's going to be, it's, it's always limited to a maximum number of students so they could, I wasn't going to say.
There's a benefit, right, to the.
There's a benefit that, yeah, they're going to actually walk out of there, learn and not get lost with, with 30 other people.
Is there any plan or, I don't think there's anything definitive, but there's opportunity for carpooling or bussing or anything like that because you and I have discussed that, so just.
Yeah. So, so essentially what's going to happen, it's, we would consider it the East Coast Training Center, you know, let's say Rivian and Lucid have facilities around the country, not many, they don't have any on the East Coast. Atlanta is the closest one. In fact, I currently have two students leaving, or two, two technicians leaving Sunday, one going to California and one going to Atlanta. So, essentially, this would be the East Coast Training Center. Most of these guys would probably be on the East Coast, really from Texas on over, depending on what seminar or what class is being held. They would come in, they would normally have a hotel, they'd stay at the hotel, they'd all be at the same hotel because there's not many, so you know, it's good proximity to some of the hotels. And they would either carpool in or they would Uber in. Not many are going to actually get a, a rental car. Some do, and just an example, the two that I have going now getting a rental car, one's just going to Uber because it's close enough to the airport to them or really the hotel. So, the carpooling is definitely an option. And if everybody came individually and everybody drove, I think that's going to be a rare, rare scenario that's going to take place.
Even then, we have enough car, enough parking spaces to, to meet the maximum number of people onsite at any given time?
Yes.
Okay. Deliveries, you're not anticipating any kind of delivery? Deliveries, you're not anticipating any kind of deliveries to the site other than maybe the vehicles being driven onto the site by the manufacturer? But there's no large-scale truck deliveries other than UPS or FedEx truck delivering packages, correct?
Right. There's going to be no deliveries because, again, there'd be no parts, no service. It's whatever equipment that's going to be in the building, that would be the only time it's going to be delivered. And it's not going to be, if we had a delivery of equipment, it's going to be there, it's going to be there permanently.
In terms of trash, you're not going to be disposing of any parts or anything like that? It's really just going to be almost like an office space, trash, waste bins and things like that, correct?
Right. So there is a dumpster bin already on the site itself there. Honestly, I think if the township supplied a trash, a garbage can and recyclables, that would, all the facility would actually need. But worst-case scenario, if I need to partner with a trash disposal company for, you know, recyclables and trash, that's easily done. And it'd be very, very minimal.
The types of vehicles, obviously, we know that they're EVs. EVs come in a couple different shapes and sizes, I guess I'll say. You're planning on things like a Lucid private vehicle sedan. Rivian has some regular-sized SUVs, pickup trucks. Rivian also makes some delivery vans, something like what the Amazon vehicles, or what Amazon now has. Those are the typical type of vehicles that you're looking at bringing in and out of the facility, is that correct?
Yes, sedans, pickup trucks, SUVs in the smaller one, when you say the Amazon vans.
Yeah, let me clarify, we're not talking about.
Yeah, they're actually Rivian vans. They're called EDV 700s, EVD 500s. So the 500s a little bit smaller, the 700s a little bit larger. But yeah, I would only see maybe one or two on site if that, and the larger vehicles. And really, my thought process is, is there's probably going to be maybe a total of four vehicles that will be in the vehicle at any given time.
And those vehicles will be kept in the building, correct?
Yeah, it's not going to be a revolving door, or essentially, the vehicles are going to come in, and they're going to say, these guys are coming in for four to five days. They're going to spend half the time in the classrooms and the other half the time's hands-on, you know, going through the motions with the instructors. So they're properly trained in order to work on the vehicles itself there.
And I believe Ms. Gomez asked a question about chargers. Apart from the charger that's in the parking lot, that's just going to be used for vehicles parking in the parking lot, is there, are there any chargers proposed in or near the facility to charge those vehicles? Or will you need to charge them or anything like that? Are they, what kind of charger, if there is a charger?
All right, so obviously, the town had requested one outdoor EV charger. It's, if you went to a Wawa or something, they have an EV charger. These are on a much smaller scale. It's essentially, it's a pole, it's about five foot, it has two cables off of it. Honestly, it's not even going to be visible from the road. We also have EV chargers inside the facility. You have four in the big room. And you actually have one in the smaller room, and then there'll be two on the outside of the room as part of the OE requested, two on the outside with a disconnect so they could turn it on and off as needed.
So it's a requirement for the manufacturers that you're working with?
Yes.
But they're not going to be accessible to the public, they're not going to be a charging station to the public. It's really just for those vehicles, and that's their requirement from Rivian or Lucid or whatever the company is?
And they'll be, they won't emit any, there's no noise. It's silent, it's literally silent.
And those are smaller chargers?
Yeah, actually, yeah. Other than the one outside, that's about four or five feet tall. The other ones are only about a foot tall by six inches. And they hang right on the wall, something that you would kind of put on at your home if you were going to, if you had an EV vehicle at your house.
I think I tried to hit on everything in the reports, but if anybody has questions, obviously, we're happy. I don't have any further questions for the witness.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. Two very quick questions. Just, we were looking just for some clarification. Who actually owns the vehicles that are going to be coming in? Is it customer-owned vehicles or private property, or is it coming from the dealership?
There'd be no dealerships because the EV companies are direct to consumers, so they would be owned directly by the OEMs.
Okay, perfect. And then how are those vehicles going to be delivered? Are they going to be driven to the site? Are they going to come on some kind of flatbed? Just what that was going to look like?
So typically, they're going to be driven because they are displays, you know, and they do travel around with them. So they'll have ones that are, that would be driven.
That's all I had. Thank you.
So what?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Counselor, or anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going down to my left again.
No, no questions.
The only people who are going to be in that building are those that are attending these classes. And they're done, I don't come by and ask you if I can come get a job or if I can come to one of these classes?
No, it's strictly imitation-only. Essentially, these are certified shops around the country. In order to be a certified facility, one of the requirements is actually training, hands-on training. So typically, there are three weeks, so there's three separate classes. However, you would need, like say for me, I need three separate employees, maybe four to five employees that would have to attend these classes. One employee or two employees may attend a one-week class because that's all they're doing as far as, you know, parts. The estimator would probably be a one-week class. Then you'd have a structural technician, you'd have a mechanical technician, and then you would have essentially what they'd call a disassembler, reassembler. So each one of these, the three main ones that I just mentioned, they would have to come for each one of those classes. So one person would have to do all three classes. And then the admin team would probably consist of just one week themselves.
He was more concerned for the neighborhood. This is not a place where I can come and say, hey, can I try your school?
Absolutely not.
You're not welcoming people off the street.
It's not open to the general public.
I can't take my car there to get it fixed.
Absolutely not.
Okay, very good. Anything else you have to?
I think we've pretty much covered all bases.
I just want to address that the, there's a memo from Olbridge Fire District 3 dated before December. I'm assuming you're aware of that now. Okay, I'll give you this one if you want. And then Ms. Totten did speak something about trees, hoping that we wouldn't have to remove them. But Mr. Lavallo, the arbiter, the arborist here in the township, has authored a memo also. I guess to you, sir, dated October 15th. So you would obviously comply if any of that was necessary.
Yeah, if tree removal permit, if we're removing anything, we'll follow up with a tree removal permit. So we have two other witnesses that will come back.
You have a planner, I'm assuming it's coming back?
A planner and a traffic engineer. Traffic engineer will be brief unless the board has any questions.
All right. I appreciate your cooperation tonight. I know we had limited time, and we still have another application to get to.
No, we appreciate the time.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm going to, but I want to make sure they don't have anything direct.
Nothing else on direct for these three witnesses.
Right. We'll go to the public portion on this. This is 12-2025Z. This is TAR Properties, physical location's 475 Marlboro Road. It's a training facility for electronic vehicle repair. If anyone wants to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand. I see none, I'm going to close the public portion. Counselor, the next, I think we agreed was January 8th?
January 8th works. Are we, no further notice, or do we need to renotice because of the new year? Requiring, okay. No, I just want to be on the same page, that's all.
It's with? Okay.
So January 8th with new notice?
Right, then don't forget that is reorg night. So we'll have matters before.
Understood.
A little housekeeping issues before.
We'll hope to be brief.
Okay.
Get reached. But yeah, understood.
For those watching at home, this matter, TAR Properties, 475 Marlboro Road. This is a continued application to January 8th. There will be further notice. Thank you, sir, for appearing, and Counselor, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time, thanks.
Enjoy the holidays. Carmen, are you okay?
I am.
Can we proceed?
Yes.
Chair, I just, I have a quick question on others. I'd like to not bring back witnesses again. Are we okay if the engineer and the architect do not return?
So I think the only thing we're worried about with the stormwater portion of it, I think we were just going to try to figure out how that was going to get realigned with DOT, so maybe, maybe just the civil engineer on my end.
I would agree with that.
I would guess if you could handle that before?
I guess what I'll say is, we'll make a determination on our architect, but I'm assuming the board doesn't have any issue if we make a decision on the architect. Our risk, but, yeah, okay.
I see none, but your risk.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go straight through. We have one more application for the evening. Okay, I'll just call it in. 56-2024Z. This is Olbridge Chemicals, Zone SD3. This is Block 6303, Lots 9 and 11. Physical location, Old Waterworks Road, warehouse facility, chemical and allied products. Applicant proposes a minor subdivision lot line adjustment to cure an encroachment between Lots 11 and 9, seeking major preliminary and final site plan with minor subdivision. And D. Varance Lawrence Kelly Esquire representing. Sir?
Mr. Chairman members, nice to see everybody. Thank you for having us. For the record, Larry Kelly, on behalf of the applicant, Olbridge Chemicals LLC. Mr. Chair members, I don't think we're going to take up too much of your time on direct testimony this evening. I realize that you've got a quorum, but short of a fully constituted board, so we don't think we're going to seek a vote this evening, even should we conclude our matter. But we've got a relatively lean deck of witnesses, Mr. Chairman, considering our case really does not have that many moving parts, despite the potential public interest in our project, relatively straightforward. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if you would, I'll go as fast as I reasonably can, given the hour. But I'd like to frame what we hope to do here and who you're going to hear from shortly, and then we can go from there, with your pleasure, sir.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. So the property, as you indicated, is, it's 554 Waterworks Road. It's, there's three lots that essentially comprise this assemblage, it's Lots 9, 10, and 11, and Block 6303. It's about 83 acres and change as comprised. We're within a redevelopment plan area and the SD3 zoning district. And this project involves effectively a lot line adjustment. It's tantamount to a subdivision, but it's effectively a lot line adjustment. There are no new lots being created here. We're jogging existing lot lines of this property. There are no new uses being proposed here. There are no enhancements to the existing uses being proposed. And there is no development being proposed as part of this application before the Board of Adjustment. This is a lot line reconfiguration. Our scrivener of record, our project engineer, will testify shortly, showing the board and delineating the lot line adjustments and changes. There are some deltas, some lot areas going up, some is going down. Primarily, it involves two things, I'll say. One is conforming to delineated areas of environmentally constrained areas, which is under federal review for super fund sites, EPA review. It's creating effectively access to our rear lot and rear configuration of all the lots, including eased areas and right-of-way dedications that were part of the township redevelopment plan. And the deltas are downward adjustment of about seven acres on one lot, a downward adjustment of less than one acre on another lot, and an upward adjustment of about five acres on the third lot. But we're starting with three lots, we're ending with three lots, and no new development or construction or uses are proposed. And to the extent there might be a misunderstanding with, not the board, but perhaps members of the public that might think that there is some enhancement to the pre-existing use of the Olbridge Chemicals on the property, that there's some intensification to the operation, change of operations or expansion of the operations, there is not. There is absolutely no change. What brings us to the Board of Adjustment is sort of nuanced. And in my 20-plus years, I've never really seen this. This is the opposite of what is known as the Raspberry case in a way, which is lot area of a pre-existing non-conforming lot in use is expanding. And the township has determined that that is tantamount to an expansion of that pre-existing use on that lot. It's the inverse of the seminal Raspberry case, which was where the lot got smaller, which was in fact an intensification. But that's the nuance that brings us here for use variance relief. You know, lest there be no misnomer that we are in fact expanding that use, we are not. That lot area is just incidentally getting bigger so we can adjust our lot lines, Mr. Chairman. With that said, we've got two project witnesses that will qualify as experts shortly. Josh Weary from Dynamic Engineering. Josh is, as I indicated, the scrivener of record from Dynamic Engineering. He'll walk the board through the plan, the lot line adjustment that I have sort of proffered to you so far. And then our project planner, Christine Caphone. I know Christine's a familiar face here in the township as well. Notwithstanding the fact that I indicated the relief is relatively nuanced and hyper-technical, it's variance relief nonetheless. So we want to put that on the record for you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. We'll certainly answer all of your questions, any questions from the public. But we're going to, we're going to proceed, you know, in a relatively expeditious route as this case probably warrants, given there's limited moving parts, so to speak.
Understood, sir.
Thank you. So our first witness, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to call Josh Weary, our civil engineer.
All right, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm tell truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your names, spare your last for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joshua Weary, last name W-I-R-R-Y.
Take it away, Counselor.
Thank you. So Josh, your professional background and experience in licensing, for the benefit of the record, please.
Sure. So I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with a Bachelor's in Science in Civil Engineering. I'm a principal at Dynamic Engineering located in Chester, New Jersey, testified before various boards throughout New Jersey, and I have over 10 years of design experience.
Well, accept his credentials, and just so those in the audience, the man testifying now is a professional engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Josh, you heard my proffer to the board, you know, given the hour, I'm going to let you just get off to the races, explaining to the board existing and proposed conditions. I know that you're going to ultimately mark an exhibit. When we get to that document, we'll just identify it for the record and mark it when you get there.
Sure. So to start, Mr. Kelly, I would like to bring up our aerial map exhibit that was submitted to the board. I believe that's the first PDF on that screen there. Perfect. So this exhibit is entitled Aerial Map Exhibit, which I'll mark as A1 for the record. It's dated with today's date of December 4th, 2025, at a scale of 1 inch equals 150 feet. And north is to the top right corner of the page. So as you can see, there's an aerial image of the surrounding area with the property lines outlined in yellow. And the site is located along Waterworks Road, which runs along the top of the exhibit, and consists of three lots within Block 6303. And as Mr. Kelly mentioned, under existing conditions, there are three lots. And as part of the proposed subdivision, we are maintaining those three lots. We are only proposing minor lot line adjustments, which are largely due to either environmental factors or specific zoning requirements, which we'll get into a little more detail shortly. And again, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, there's no construction improvements proposed with this specific application. So I'd like to just go through and run through each property individually, starting with Lot 10.11. That's the property located in the top right corner of the page.
You happen to have a pointer? I think it would be helpful for those in the audience.
Certainly. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you very much. So like I said, I'd like to start off with Block, with Lot 10.11. Again, located in the top right corner of the page, in the northeast corner. This property is located along Waterworks Road and contains the remains of the former CPS chemical facility, which is a designated super fund site. And as such, the property is currently undergoing remediation efforts by the EPA, who formalized their cleanup plan back in September of 2019. So this specific property is located within the Waterworks Road 2 redevelopment area that was also adopted by the township back in June of 2023. As for the property line adjustments, we're proposing a 30-foot-wide right-of-way dedication that's highlighted in blue along Waterworks Road. So this dedication that, along this property, was specifically listed as a requirement in the redevelopment plan for this property, which is why we're proposing it here today. So this dedication reduces the lot area minimally from 24.86 acres to 24.13 acres, which is a reduction of 0.73 acres for the record. And this reduction still complies with the redevelopment plan's minimum lot size of 20 acres. So we're also proposing a 40-foot-wide easement, as depicted in red, as you can see, runs through the middle of the property. And that will be utilized to provide future access to Lot 9.11 at the rear of the site. As mentioned in the township's review letter, the easement crosses portions of wetlands as well as flood hazard area that impacts Lot 10.11. Mr. Kelly, I believe it's important to note that a lot of planning has gone into that access, as well as the access easement. And with that, a lot of coordination with the NGDEP. So our office, as well as the applicant's environmental team, which comprises of several professionals as well, has met with the NJDEP multiple times on this access. We most recently met with them last month to discuss the anticipated wetlands and flood hazard area impacts. And our office is currently working with the applicant to prepare the necessary applications and submission documents for those permits as well. So that is lot ten-point-eleven. I'd like to move down the page to lot nine-point-eleven, as you can see, at the rear of the property. This is the largest of the three lots we're here to discuss tonight, located to the south, and as you can see, is primarily wooded. This property is also located within the Waterworks Road two redevelopment area. And as you can see, does not have direct access to Waterworks Road at the top of the page. So the reason we are proposing the access easement through lot ten is to provide access to lot nine-point-eleven at the rear. As for the property line adjustments, we're also proposing a sixty-foot wide right-of-way dedication along the western portion of the property line to Jake Brown Road West. And again, this specific dedication was listed as a requirement for this property in the redevelopment plan we mentioned earlier. The dedication itself is approximately two-point-zero-nine acres. And in addition to the dedication, we're also transferring approximately five-point-seven-four acres located in the northwest corner of the top-left corner of lot nine-point-eleven. And we'll be transferring this area to the proposed lot eleven-point-eleven. So overall, we're reducing the lot nine-point-eleven area from fifty-one-point-three-eight acres to forty-three-point-five-four acres, which is a reduction of seven-point-eight-four acres. And again, still complies with the redevelopment plan's minimum lot size requirement of twenty acres. So, Mr. Calley, moving on to the third and final property is lot eleven-point-eleven, located in the top-left corner. Again, this is also located along Waterworks Road and includes the Old Bridge Minerals Facility, which is also included in the super fund site we mentioned earlier, and has ongoing remediation of the property, including removal of contaminated soil. Lot eleven-point-eleven is actually located outside of the redevelopment area and is within the special development three, or the SD three zone. And while the facility is technically non-conforming or non-permitted use within the zone, it has been operating in this location for many years. And again, for the record, as Mr. Calley mentioned, we are not proposing to increase the current operations, and no construction is proposed with this application. As Mr. Calley mentioned, the main reason why we're transferring this area from lot nine-point-eleven to eleven-point-eleven is so that all of the environmentally sensitive areas that require remediation and cleanup to be completely located on lot eleven-point-eleven. We want to need the lot nine property to be completely clean, and that is the main reason for the lot line adjustment in this application. I want to point out, for our planner discussing a little bit more detail shortly, is there is an existing variance for this property. Landscape area ratio of zero-point-one-three-two is provided under existing conditions, whereas a minimum of zero-point-four is required. Again, this is an existing condition, and we're actually improving this slightly to increase that condition to zero-point-one-five-two, just by increasing the overall area of the property with the proposed subdivision. And then lastly, with this application, we're proposing a second access easement. It's highlighted in red on the plan. And that's located in the vicinity of the lot line adjustment that we're proposing. And that will allow for the future development of lot nine-point-eleven in the rear to utilize this portion of area for circulation. It was mentioned in the township's review letter to modify that easement to be in an access and utility easement, based on the review of the separate application for the site plans, and our office reviewed that, and we certainly agree with their recommendation. And we can modify any required easement agreements or subdivision plans to note that accordingly as well. And, Mr. Calley, I believe that wraps up my direct testimony.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Weary, available with any questions of your board and your consultants that you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Calley. Mr. McCarthy?
Sure, thank you. Two, just very quick questions. Just number one, if there's, just to make sure there's no objections to any of the comments we had regarding the plan revisions for the minor subdivision?
That's correct, we have no objections.
Okay, and then the second one, just trying to figure out how the subdivision's gonna be filed, whether by deed or plat? We would recommend by plat, but just wanted to clarify. Sorry, just looking to see how the subdivision will be filed, whether it's by deed or plat?
We agree, we will record by plat, as recommended.
And that's all I have, thank you.
So I... So I don't know if my question is to the engineer or the attorney, but I think for the benefit of the board, as well as for the crowd that is here, right? What was the reason for the subdivision? Can you just elaborate on that? Why are you in front of the board for the subdivision? So that the residents understand why you are in front of the zoning board versus the planning board? Especially because I've been getting numerous emails and questions regarding the zoning, and I just want all of them to hear, because this is just the first part, and then there is a planning board hearing as well. So I think it's better that you testify or you comment on it.
Certainly, and I'm glad to do that. So, it's interesting. Applications for subdivision relief, more often than not, go to the planning board for relief. That's where jurisdiction normally lies under the Title Forty. Here, we're at the Board of Adjustment for subdivision relief, and it's a relatively singular reason why that is. It's because of the pre-existing non-conforming use on, Mr. Weary's identifying it, plan north of that property, the Old Bridge Minerals site right there. That's a pre-existing non-conforming use, which means that that use has been implemented and in place, predating the code provisions, which have prohibited that principal use from operating there. It's grandfathered in, to use layman's terms. That use is allowed to continue perpetually under state law, the case law and the statutory law. But if a pre-existing non-conforming use is sought to be expanded, and expansion has been meant and held by the courts to mean things like even modernization and aesthetic improvements under, you know, the Seminole case Burbridge for that D-two relief. Enhancements to a D-two are tantamount to a use variance relief. That's what gives original jurisdiction to the zoning board of adjustment in that case. Here, it's been determined by the township that there is D-two relief, because that pre-existing non-conforming use in lot is now being increased in lot area. No changes to the operation, no improvements to the site, no changes to the use, no expansion of that use, and no new development proposed. However, the lot line adjustment that we're creating, which is an upward adjusted delta of a few acres on that lot, was enough to trigger D-two relief. And then when I say D-two for the members of the public, it's NJ SA forty-colon-fifty-five-dash-seventy-D-two. It's subsection D-two of section seventy of Title Forty, the municipal land use law. That gives the Board of Adjustment jurisdiction to hear that, as opposed to this review being consolidated with the planning board on a site plan review. It is not because we are expanding the use or changing the use in any way of that facility. We are not. We are not asking the board for that type of relief. And should we leave here tonight and decide tomorrow, we want to change that use, we've got to come back to this board to do that. So it's not as though we're getting a free pass here from the board, saying this is only a subdivision, and then tomorrow we install a new structure or modify business operations. That would be a violation of the code, that would be a violation of state law, and that's not the relief we're seeking here from the board. The relief we're seeking is a modification to what is otherwise effectively invisible lot boundary lines that are innocuous to human view, and you would only identify it by looking at deed paperwork or a plat that's going to be recorded here. That's what brings us to this board for that relief. The incidental bulk relief that Mr. Weary testified to is actually an improved situation for the landscape area non-conformance. It's a design issue, it's one that exists today, and it's actually being improved by the proposed scenario nominally. However, it's being improved. You know, I don't know if that...
Right, and let me, let me explain it a little more, because I know Mr. Calley was very technical, but for most of the residents, especially because of the emails that I have been reading. So, Maureen, can you do me a favor? In the USP, there is historic aerials. There are two of them. What I want to show you guys is, I tried to pull up the historic aerials which are available. This use has existed, or this Old Bridge Chemicals was started between nineteen-sixty-three and nineteen-sixty-nine, way before the township wrote its zoning ordinance, or even before zoning came into New Jersey. So the plant has existed. I have received numerous emails about contamination, the super fund site. There has been significant monitoring, and it was first the state-level monitoring, because it was a super fund site. But later on, US EPA took over. And when they took over, they came up with two action plans. There was an interim action, because there was some groundwater contamination at that point. And I'm talking about the nineteen, probably nineteen-ninety-three. And so they capped some of those areas. They started monitoring it for, you know, purity or whatever that be. Then the next step was the final capping. And from what I understand, is in two thousand and twenty-three, EPA conducted a public hearing to get in public input on the strategies to cap it. They have already stopped the use, where really the contamination was on the CPS Madison site. There is nothing that is in operation at this point. They are contemplating between cleaning up the zinc or whatever debris was left, and then again, capping it further, so that it's sealed and it's remediated. The final action, if I'm not mistaken, and Josh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's supposed to come out in June of two thousand and twenty-six. But Old Bridge does not get water from there. We buy our water from Middlesex County. So the water that is coming is actually not from this area or the groundwater contamination that everybody has been talking about. There is a lawsuit between Port Amboy and Old Bridge Chemicals, if I'm not mistaken. And the owners are here, they can correct me if I'm wrong. But it had impacted the wells of Port Amboy. It did not affect anything in Old Bridge. They are working together. So there was a lot of misinformation that was being circulated. Typically, I wouldn't have spoken about it unless it was a site plan application. But I think it's critical, because there were some people accusing or questioning my zoning determination as to if it is a super fund site and you are allowing the subdivision, isn't that an expansion? And why is it not a use variance? That's not how it works. The only reason, and in all fairness, I was the one who asked for the subdivision long ago when Mr. Klausner and I met for the first time, because there were some structures that were on this bigger property. So I thought it was best to just seclude it and separate it out. So it was my idea to ask for a subdivision, so that when I work on a redevelopment plan, it is a much cleaner project. The HP Warehousing site itself does not have contamination, and the engineer can speak about it if you have more questions. But again, my, the reason I asked why this subdivision, why are you in front of the zoning board? It was because it would be cleaner to have whatever belongs to Old Bridge Chemicals. I don't want to use Old Bridge Chemicals as the name, I know it's called Old Bridge Minerals now, right? So Old Bridge Minerals site, so that everything that is accessory to the manufacturing unit goes on to their property. There is no expansion. We are not reviewing anything for the expansion of use. The other, the other reason, I would hate to split an application like that between a zoning board or a planning board, but the only reason they had to be here was because of the way the township's ordinance defines existing non-conforming uses. It says that if the lot area increases, like if you think about it technically, if the lot area is reducing, I can understand intensification. But when the lot area is increasing, it's really not an intensification of that use. Because you heard me before on other applications, where I'm saying it's a smaller lot and you're over utilizing. In this case, the lot is increasing. But I have to stick to the ordinances. We did have numerous conversations with Mr. Calley, Mr. Joe Sardello, and at that time, Mr. Dusty, to come up, to see if we could have kept the entire application with the planning board. Unfortunately, the ordinance does not allow me to do that, and that's the only reason why they are here. So it's a simple lot line that is changing. And it's literally on paper that it changes, so that all the accessory structures go on to the chemical manufacturing unit site. I would refrain, I encourage you to ask questions, because the whole team is here, but I would refrain you from asking questions that are site plan related, because there is a separate hearing for that. The zoning board is not privy to the site plan application, so I don't want them to get distracted in the site plan details. Please ask questions related to the subdivision. You can ask questions related to the contamination, because the team is here, they have more knowledge. But otherwise, I don't have a question for the engineer. And yes, it's on the screen, I'm sorry, I got distracted. Can you zoom in a little bit?
Counselor, should we mark this as a board exhibit?
Sure.
Mark it as B-one for the record.
Thank you.
Just for the record, this is the nineteen-sixty-three historic image.
Sixty-three, thank you.
Yes, counselor?
Nineteen-sixty-three. Historic...
Nineteen-sixty-three historic image marked as B-one.
You see, this is the area, you don't see it here. I'm sorry. Chat, can I get? So you'll see nineteen-sixty-three, the manufacturing unit didn't exist. Thank you, that's easy. So it didn't exist before, can you move to the sixty-nine?
Mark that as exhibit B-two. Thank you.
Look at this develop, look at this development here. So between nineteen-sixty-three and nineteen-sixty-nine is when this came in. And you look at the area where your houses are, there was nothing here back here. It was only this industry. And Christine, you can thank me later, but just to give you a brief view, nineteen-seventies zoning map.
Mark this as exhibit B-three.
Let me orient myself, okay. This is exactly where the site is located. You see the M-three zone, the SD zone, right? This entire area was zoned industrial, and this is a zoning map of the nineteen-seventies, right? Even where your homes currently are, this area was all zoned industrial. It was, it remained industrial for the longest time. And if some of you may recall, after you bought the homes, there were some homeowners who came and applied for zoning permits to put their decks and patios. And you were denied, because you were in the industrial zone. You were in the EDO-three zone. And we wanted to save your time, as well as the board's time, from coming back, because if you're in the industrial zone, a deck or a patio is not permitted accessory use, so you would have to come back to the zoning board. So that's why the council decided... So that's why the council decided to rezone just the single-family homes into a residential zone. So the residential zone has come up in the last two years. I was the one who rezoned it. But originally, the town always had this entire area, the area around here, as industrial. And it's quite typical. If you go across the border, like Boardentown Road, if you see across the municipal boundary in Seville, it's all industrial zone. And it's very typical for a town, when you are at the municipal boundaries, you will see industries because that's where the county road runs. That's where you get connection to the highways. So Seville has its industries in that area, so does Old Bridge have. So just to give you a zoning background, and I, and I'm doing this only because there were so many questions. It is physically not possible for me to respond to every email, but it's not that your questions were being ignored. It's just that I was waiting for a forum to speak. I had spoken to Mr. Kelly that I will make a presentation, I will talk about zoning. So this is a little background, and you can take it from there.
Very helpful, very explanatory, and you know, again, we can't reiterate enough, it's hyper-technical and nuanced, which brings us here, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. It's hyper-technical and nuanced, which brings us to this board as opposed to being at the planning board, where all of this effectively is a site plan review with a subdivision component, Mr. Chairman. And, and again, there are no proposed aspects of development here. And I would say that, not just given the hour of the night, but, but once, Mr. Chairman, you and your dais of fellow members are through with cross-examining Mr. Weary, perhaps we can proceed to our planning witness before it's opened up to questions of the public? Because I could see this perhaps going down a rabbit hole of inquiries that are a little beyond the purview of his testimony and also the scope of our relief here.
Fortunately, I don't think I'm going to allow that only because of the hour of the night.
Okay.
So we're at ten nineteen right now. We have a hard stop at ten thirty. It's probably going to go beyond that because I have to entertain the public's questions as well as, we haven't even asked the board if they have anything.
I understand.
So I would say no to another witness tonight, only because time's going to prohibit it.
I understand, sir. Thank you.
Questions of this witness on my left?
No questions. Vina answered them all.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Rizzo, counselor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
If I were to ask you this question, and you could simply just explain it, stepping away from your technical knowledge, there's three lots you're talking about, right? And what is a lot? A lot is a determination of a land area by boundary, invisible boundary.
Correct.
Just like a person's home. All right. And there's three of them that we're talking about tonight. And we're talking about moving a lot line. Is the total area going to expand by moving the lot line?
Good question. No.
Okay. Is it going to diminish?
It would only diminish by the dedications that were providing to the township.
But Lot nine, ten, and eleven, one may be bigger than the other, but no one's going outside where it's at.
Correct, that's correct.
So it's kind of like your own home.
Yes.
You could probably get a subdivision to build another home, but the lot doesn't get any bigger. Whatever land you have, you have.
It is what it is, yes.
If I were, if this were granted, and it was granted tonight, and you affected it next week, and I came to see an overview, would I see anything different on the property?
No.
Nothing at all.
Nope.
Only on a survey would, would I read a lot. So nothing is going to be taken down?
Correct.
Nothing is going to be put up?
Correct.
We're not removing fences, we're not changing anything? We have invisible lines that we're moving?
Invisible lines, no improvements.
Okay. I don't know, I'm going to open this to the public. I don't know, again, we have to agree that we can't put another witness under this. These people have been waiting all night, and I want to hear from them. And I would like to do that, but unfortunately, we're just out of time tonight. You did hear Ms. Wan explain it as best as can be. I'm trying to put it into terms that we all can understand. I know from the picture that your homes, or I guess they were a little to the, would it be southeast?
To the south, yeah.
And I know that's why you're here. So I'm going to open the public portion, but I'd like it to be somewhat controlled. Please don't repeat what someone else has said. Obviously, you have concerns. Get to your concern, bearing in mind what you were told tonight. We can't cast something a year from now or five years from now. I don't know about that. We are only dealing with this one application to move some invisible lines on the property that they already own. All right, this is fifty-six, twenty twenty-four Z. I'm going to open up the public portion. Please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. We'll try and get in as many as we can. Sir on the aisle right there, please come forward. Again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, therefore you have to be put under oath.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. This is Kiran Venkatesan. I'm a resident of Old Bridge.
Can you please just spell your last name, please?
Sure. Kiran, first name, K-I-R-A-N. Last name is V-E-N-K-A-T-E-S-A-N.
And your address?
All right, fifty-eight, Hibiscus Court, Old Bridge.
Take it away.
Thank you. I'm here in the front of the board as a resident, and as well as I'm an elected Board of Education School member. And I have a few questions here based on this presentation. I don't know if you can go back to that PDF that was shown with the lot lines.
Speak a little bit slower for the stenographer, please, and
Okay.
So the board can fully understand what you're saying.
Sure. So if you can quickly go back to that PDF where we had the lot lines, a few points I observed was, one is great, you want to consolidate all the impacted areas or the chemical areas, mineral areas whatsoever into one lot. That is one of the objectives, which is good. But also, I observed that we are doing this to build a, a way to enter into the third property, right?
What, sir? I didn't understand it.
We, access road. We are trying to do this realignment of the rezoning to also facilitate a access road into the third property, the nine dot eleven, I think, right? Yeah, that's what we heard.
So that's
And the red line that says there, right, shown there, also indicated, and it was testified, that we need access into the third lot. Yeah.
Proposing an access easement through Lot ten.
Yeah.
Easement.
So if it was only adjusting the property lines to just consolidate the active area, the superfund site whatsoever, but why do you want access into the third site? And if you look at the third bottom site, it is nine dot eleven, whatever the bigger section of the area, look how beautiful that looks. Look at the residents and the families that are living there. Imagine what is going to happen once you put an access road into that. Yesterday, we are talking only about the zoning, so I'm going to keep my comments only for zoning. But imagine what these residents, about two fifty-five homes there, paying about twenty thousand as tax monies to this district, times two fifty-five, you're going to have about five million dollars being put into this district. These families have come in to Old Bridge in the last three years with a dream in mind, right? For all that Old Bridge is going to offer. So imagine if you put an access road into that today and approve it, what's going to happen in the future? I don't know. We don't know. Because that is part of the planning board, right? So I would like to, you know, put this forth with the board to assess clearly why you need access road if it is only about adjusting the property lines. Thank you.
And I'm going to take care of it. So, one, I understand that everybody here is, they are, this is an emotional issue, you're very concerned, but again, this is a quasi-judicial forum. I know you guys want to clap, I know you guys may want to cheer, I know you guys may want to yell in the stands, but I need you all to just maintain a level of respect and decorum. There could be no clapping. And with respect, there was a comment about taxes. The board is not permitted to consider any potential tax impact on any prospective application. That would be an unlawful consideration, so just to be perfectly clear, that is not something that's valid. With respect to the application that is before this board, it is, again, for all intents and purposes, a lot line adjustment, which does require an expansion of existing non-conforming use. So while I understand the public has a lot of concern, I would just ask that the testimony and comments be focused on the application that is before the board, not any application or interest or testimony that may or not, may not be more relevant for a pending application before the planning board. So with that, Mr. Chairman.
Next person who wants to speak, sir? Against the wall in the back?
On the road.
Well, I can answer that for Mr. Weary.
Excuse me.
The subdivision and the access easement are two completely distinct things. An access easement is a private, non-possessory interest in land. It has little to nothing to do with the subdivision but for the fact that Mr. Weary plotted it on his subdivision plan that's before this board. There is no relief required from this board in connection with an access easement through lots controlled by private property owners to another lot, to the rear Lot nine. There is no variance being sought for that, there is no site plan component being sought for that, there is no subdivision component being sought for that. It's an access easement through private property. It can be granted completely irrespective of board review. It's a private property agreement. There was a lot of statement in that question. I don't know what to call from the question, but I believe that should have answered it.
Well, you got, you can't, you cannot speak from the audience. You have to come forward, be sworn.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for the next member of the public, just to tack on to what Mr. Varga indicated, which is, I'm not certain members of the public, you know, are fully familiar with the process, but the questions really need to be linked to the direct testimony that was provided. And, and I don't want to be the guy who has to jump in constantly. I'm trying to give enough leeway to members of our public who are lay witnesses and lay individuals that are not part of this process on a regular basis. But I ask that the board be mindful of the fact that when the questions start going astray, for purposes of the application's efficiency and the time, we keep it on the rails.
I fully understand that, and I did try to instruct them to keep their questions as to the testimony.
I know, sir, thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Ma'am? Nope, before you Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and spell your last for the record. I'm so sorry, I don't type that fast.
S.I.L.O.N.A. S.A.C.H.D.E.V.
And your address?
Seven Gazania Drive. I just asked in simple words.
Hold on.
I'm sorry. I'm not prepared, I just, as you see, we are very emotional, and we feel deceived because it doesn't make a difference if you said that it was already that zone. It doesn't help us. If you open that zone for us to live in, you should protect us. So I just want to understand in simple words, how does it affect my house over there?
It doesn't whatsoever.
If it's going to danger my kids when that opens, it is a concern.
That issue has not even been proposed by the applicant. They're changing a lot line, ma'am. They're not doing anything other than that.
It means?
What's there is there, no.
My lot is in that yellow, whatever bracket is, my house is there.
No, I understand it. Their property is still going to Their property is still going to be there in the same size. Nothing is changing. It's not going away, it's not going to change. They're changing the interior size of the lots. They're not getting any bigger or any smaller in total. So nothing is changing.
Nothing is changing?
It's not going away, if that's what you're hoping for.
Okay.
They own the land.
It's not going to affect my house directly. It's not going to affect it. Like you're not going to have any opening to my community. It's not going to affect, that's what you said.
That's not before the board. Your question is, are they going to, would they be able to drive into your property?
Yes.
That's not before the board, and I don't know why they would do that, but, no, that's not before the board.
Okay.
Thank you for your concern.
Hi, my name is Catherine Lee.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Catherine, K.A.T.H.E.R.I.N.E. Last name Lee, L.E.E.
And your address?
Eight Hibiscus Court, Old Bridge, New Jersey.
Take it away.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your time tonight and for everyone serving on the board. So I work in media and entertainment, so everything that just was discussed here is very foreign to me. I just want to know layman's terms. I don't need to know all the legal jargon. Why does that need to be rezoned? If nothing is going to happen within, then why does it have to be changed?
Nothing is being rezoned. What is happening is, again, they're just maneuvering the imaginary lines within the four corners that makes up their entire property because the intent was, one, there's right-of-way dedication that is being proposed as Mr. Weary testified to you, but secondly
Sorry, sorry. Say that again slowly. Again, I'm not like
I apologize, and I'm probably talking too fast.
Thank you so much for being patient with me.
So right-of-way are portions of, and this is just for, I heard from the members of the public, and again, you got to come up to the microphone, but what the right-of-way is, that is what could be a future roadway.
And where is that?
So those, Mr. Weary, can you just point it out again? Sorry, counselor, but I'm going to ask him to do it.
Of course. Sure, so there's two proposed right-of-way dedications. So the first is along Old Waterworks Road, and the second is along the western property line of Lot nine point eleven.
So there are no roads right now, right? Because it's all green there where you're pointing at. And then on the northeast where you were pointing at, you said there was a Jack Brown area, and you say you want right-of-way, which means?
So it creates the width of the roadway for what it can be expanded to. So if there's already an existing roadway, let's assume it's twenty feet for simple math, and they give ten feet of right-of-way, that means that roadway in the future can be expanded ten more feet to make it wider.
So basically, it's about roadways.
Could I, could I help?
Sure.
Counselor, we're not asking for an expansion, we're giving. This is a dedication of private property to the municipality, and it's in compliance with the redevelopment plan that is already in place in the township. So these are road, these are dedications to the municipality. These are not proposed areas of improvement. These are simply dedications from the property owner to the township pursuant to codified law that is already in place by way of what we're calling a redevelopment plan, which effectively is your, your town ordinance as it applies to this portion of town and property.
So you're, you're saying you're giving back to the town that roadway, right-of-way, and also in that area where you pointed, which is somewhere southwest, right? Where the greenery is? So does that mean that area as a right-of-way has a potential for a road to be built?
That means the township could do whatever they want with that area once it is dedicated to them as a fee owner of that property. It is no longer under our control, nor our discretion, nor our determination as to what would happen at that point.
So right now, that area in yellow boundaries is not owned by the town yet?
No, not yet. It is areas to be dedicated pursuant to requirements of municipal code.
So it's going to be rededicated, and you're rededicating this area? And why is that? I just, sorry, I need to know why, like
So when you, when you adopt a redevelopment plan, there are certain provisions in it, and the townships, townships do this all across the state. Any township you look at, every, any borough you look at will have some sort of redevelopment zone with a redevelopment plan. And the purpose of it is to cure or rehabilitate what may or may not be considered a blighted area. And this plan is almost like a, a design, an idea of what can the town do to make this, to revitalize it? So in this plan, it calls for a right-of-way dedication along that portion as the applicant has testified to. So the township came up with this idea when they had a public hearing, whenever this plan was adopted, I don't know off the top of my head. And now the applicant is voluntarily accomplishing the goal of the redevelopment plan and dedicating the property to the township for the right-of-way purposes. Does that make sense? Take it away.
Till jumping. Just bear with me for a second. Maureen, can you go to the planning board's webpage, redevelopment plan segment?
I think your mic's on.
Thank you. While you guys are pulling up the documents, so
Page fifty-two. Page fifty-two.
What was your next question while they pulled? What was your next question while they pulled that up?
Yeah, I was just looking at the zoning, and as she has mentioned, this used to be industrial. And now that our area has been rezoned or zoned as residential, given the existence of our community, is there a potential for, you know, our interests to be protected by possibly reassessing the zone around us?
We can't, there's no, any impact on taxes is not something that's before this board.
It's not, I'm not talking about the tax yet, but I'm just like in terms of like...
This is not an issue that's before the board?
The industrial and the residential being together seems very incompatible. Kind of like, would you live in an area, right, where a chemical plant is? You know, even owners to the owners, would you live right by a chemical plant? Now that we have like a residential area zoned there, and as a board that's supposed to be protecting our interests, health and safety and all the risks, is there a potential that we could possibly reassess?
Ma'am, the zoning board is here to listen to an application. It's simply, we are, same homeowners as you, we probably all just live in different locations.
So it would take every application?
But that's not our function by law. Our function by law is to listen to applications brought before us and make determinations based on that to see if there should be a variance relief. That's it.
So it's...
The issues you're talking about, while they are important to you, I'm sure, and important to everyone here, probably as well as us, have nothing to do with our determination. Am I correct, counselor?
So we just have to re...
You are, Mr. Chairman.
So, the board, they're looking to make lot line changes on their property, that's all they're asking for. That's the only thing we can think about.
And the thing that's shifting from the south to the north, they're doing that because?
They wanna keep all of the contaminated property on one parcel.
Actually, more than...
Take it away.
More than the contaminated property, they have accessory structures on the site. They're just trying to put all the accessory structures on that particular lot, and they're trying to clean up the back. To answer your question, because I know there will be other people having the same question, the right-of-way dedication which the engineer was talking about is part of our township's master plan. It has been, it has been the township's master plan for the last 25 years. So in 2009, when the township wrote their circulation plan, there was plans to connect Route 9 to Borden Town Road at the back. So if you look at the circulation plan, and if it makes sense, sorry. If it makes sense to you, this is the warehousing property, this is Old Bridge Chemicals. What you see in red, this is Route 9, this is Borden Town Road. There has been a plan to connect Jake Brown Road going up north, right, right this, tagging along HP Warehousing's property, and then connecting, connecting to Brown's Road here. There is a plan to build this roadway in the future. I, I don't know when that will happen, but it has been in the township's master plan. So to answer your question, there is going to be a roadway that runs through this so that it eases traffic and brings direct traffic onto Route 9 and vice versa. It takes traffic on to Borden Town Avenue so that people can go on to 18. But it has been in the township's master plan since 2009. There were certain modifications that were done owing to the environmental constraints in 2021, way before Kay Havnenian built the homes. So that's the answer to your question about the roadway.
Okay, got it, so that's cleared down. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Ankita Modi, A.N.K.I.T., last name M.O.B.I.D., yes David, I.
And your address?
And Hester Circle, Old Bridge, and 1010, Hester Circle.
Take it away.
Okay, so I have a quick question regarding the application. So basically, applicants seeking the relief for the minimum landscape ratio variance, why so? I mean, they have 83 acres of land, and why can't they meet that 40% of like, you know, township requirement? Why applicant needs a variance for the landscape ratio? Township has ordinance for the 40% requirement, correct? While applicant is only looking for the 0.15 out of 15%.
So the...
Is I corrected, correct? I believe that's what you said in the beginning. I believe in Lot 11, you have it right now, maybe a 13%. And by combining the portion of Lot 9 into Lot 11, it will become a 15%.
That's correct, so the variance that we're seeking tonight regarding the landscape area ratio is in regards to Lot 11 only. Again, as previously mentioned, it's an existing condition, it's in a variance that, that happens today. We just so happened to make it a little bit better by providing additional area to that property from Lot 9. And that property line adjustment was determined, as Vida mentioned, to provide all the accessory structures on that property as well as a cleanup, and that's it. There isn't, we're not providing any additional land than what needs to be provided to Lot 11, essentially.
So I, I understand that portion, right? Basically, now increasing the boundary line, your imaginary boundary line, right? Now, technically, that Lot 11, again, I understand Lot 9, Lot 10, Lot 11, they own by them Old Bridge Minerals. Now technically, Lot 11 on piece of paper would be a 15 acres. Why can't they still meet, why can't they change it to the 20 acres and still comply with the 40%, 40% of the landscape ordinance requirement?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question, counselor, do you?
Just asking like, you know, more green space instead of like, you know, having a more concrete area.
I think Mr. Modi is asking, why don't we expand the size of Lot 11 as part of our subdivision to make this design variance go away? And the reason is, is, well, because we've decided these lot lines to accommodate, as we've said several times now, accommodate and mirror the superfunded environmentally contaminated area and boundaries to locate the accessory structures and components there too, all on Lot 11, so that it effectively is its own home with these imaginary lines. If we had made this 50 lots, you wouldn't know the difference tomorrow. It's three lots today, it's three lots tomorrow. We're talking about a whole lot of nothing here because the condition that on paper requires bulk variance relief is not only a no-change condition from today, one which is completely imperceptible, innocuous, and not impactful to anybody, but if we did enhance it, which we are, you still wouldn't know the difference. The only way you would know the difference is you're suggesting we modify an imaginary lot boundary line to alleviate and mitigate that relief. But again, it'd be invisible to the naked eye, that relief today is no different than it exists tomorrow. In fact, numerically, it actually improves.
The only, sorry, good. So the only benefit would be, right, I would see a more green acre space. That would be the benefit, I mean, as long as you still have to maintain the landscape ratio. I won't see the, any, on a Lot 11 right now, there is like, you know, I would say 85% of the like, you know, area on the concrete pavement, some kind of a structure there, and then 15% would be the landscape. So now, increasing the landscape ratio, I would see a more green acre space or a more open space on Lot 11. So yes, by my eyes, I can see it.
No, numerically, you would on paper, you would see mathematically, his numbers are different because you're dealing with a different lot area of square footage. So mathematically, you would see it on paper, you would not see any difference observed in the field because we're not planting new green areas. All you're doing is jogging the lot line further planned south, as you're suggesting.
Right.
The only place it changes is on Mr. Weary's plan sheet, not in reality in the field.
Yes, but on a plan south, I can see the green area, right? So you can keep those green areas as basically your landscape ratio or your, you know, green zone. There is a green area on the south, I'm not asking to the plant any more trees, there is already a tree on the south area. I'm just asking, like, you know, increase your lot size and comply with the landscape variance.
Thank you.
Second question regarding the setback variance. I think they are also looking for the setback variance from... They want to reduce the setback variance from, on the, both the side. Is there any reason to get a relief from the setback variance while the entire lot is yours?
That is an existing non-conformity, your... That is an existing non-conformity. So they don't require new relief because they're not changing or increasing it?
So any new future developments, still they have to meet the variance around the property?
If they make that, if they further encroach into that setback, then they will require variances. If they don't do anything, they don't need variances.
Got it. Last question regarding the non-conforming use, you talk so many, so much about the non-conforming use. Just from my understanding, so do they have a non-conforming use allowed only on a Lot 11 or all the lots, 9, 10, 11?
Well, we're not really talking about the use here tonight, we talked about it in the context of the fact that it triggered what's called the D2 variance relief, but we're not gonna get into operations and expansion. What you see existing out there today that predates the ordinance, that Vida was so helpful to bring up the code and the enactment and the historic aerials, there are no changes to those conditions. The existing uses and conditions on the property that exist today in the field, they are remaining tomorrow. They are not located on Lot 9, they are located on the, what I'll call, planned north lots, as you can see in that existing conditions aerial with a no-change proposed.
Again, my question is very simple, on piece of paper, you have a non-conforming use on Lot 11 or all the lots? My question is very simple, I'm just asking like, you know, where do you have a non-conforming use? Non-conforming use chemicals, where can you use it on all the lots, Lot 9, Lot 10, Lot 11?
The lots where it lawfully exists today, it is not being expanded beyond those lot lines.
I, I'm trying to understand or clarify the question. I think you're trying to ask if the non, existing non-conforming use is only gonna be contained on Lot 11? And the other two lots that are vacant are going to have conforming uses, is that the hidden question?
Yes, that's my question, and my question is, right, basically, portion of now Lot 9 is going to merge into Lot 11?
No. By definition, it is not merging.
So what is the definition, you're transferring Lot 9 to the lot, portion of Lot 9 to the Lot 11?
Yes, so let me, let me jump in. I think the bigger piece, let's, let's talk about the bigger piece of property that abuts you guys, right? A portion of it will be added to Lot 11. Lot 11 is the one that contains the existing non-conforming use. What remains of the larger piece is going to be discussed at the planning board meeting for site plan for the warehouse. The third lot is only included in the application because it provides access to the warehouse, but there is no use discussed for that lot. The warehouse use is a conforming use, so the existing non-conforming use is only going to be on Lot 11, which in your terms is enlarged, or the portion of land from the warehouse is adding on to Old Bridge Chemicals. Did I explain it right?
I, yes, you explained it very well, I understand it. So that five acre of land from a Lot 9 that they are transferring into the Lot 11, can they use the non-conforming use over there?
They're not expanding the use at all, and if you're talking about, then can they, so wait. There are existing accessory structures related to the existing non-conforming use already. All they are doing is changing the lot line. If in future, they want to expand in that five acre you're talking about, if they want to expand the use, they have to come back to the zoning board.
Okay.
Tonight, or based on the applications that are filed, there is no such expansion proposed. The only change or only thing they're asking for is the lot line adjustment. And I'm repeatedly saying this, I've written in emails too. It is, the expansion of the non-conforming use is just a technicality on paper, they are not proposing any change to the use.
Portion of, portion of Lot 9 is, I believe, then a non-conforming use, that they built a construction or a structure over there?
That has always been like that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yes, I mean, you're...
It has always been like that. They're not proposing or adding anything.
So portion of 9, they already have a structural over there, they are, that they are transferring into the Lot 11?
Yes.
Okay. Last question, like, you know...
Sir, I've given you plenty of time, I think we're up to about 12 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Hardik, H.A.R.D.I.K.B.H.A.T.T.
I'm so sorry, say... And your address?
45 Dahlia Lane.
Take it away.
In terms of NJDEP approvals, has, have there been any approvals yet when it comes to NJDEP?
There's, there's no approvals, we're currently working on the applications for the separate application, not this application tonight.
So this application does not have any approvals as of right now?
It does not require any NJDP approvals for this application tonight.
On Mr. Laun's comment about the drinking water, our concern is not the water that we drink, it's the soil and air that we're gonna breathe after this change has occurred. And there's a easement accessway. EPA's own, you, yourself, the EPA's own September 2023 decision letter confirms contaminated risks including zinc, lead, cadmium, mean, volatile organic compounds, and documented soil disturbance hazard within OU1 footprint? Can you hear me better? Okay. So a lot line reconfiguration that facilitates greater circulation, storage, or access within the zone increase the risk of disturbing contaminated soil?
Abus is an issue for the EPA, it's not an issue before this board. Again, the only issue that this board is considering is the lot line adjustment, and whether the lot line adjustment is appropriate.
But this board, this board is under jurisdiction, it is under jurisdiction for this board to evaluate the impact of public health and safety, correct?
The board evaluates this expansion of a non-conforming use pursuant to NJSA 4055D-70D2 and the Coventry Standards. And when they do that, they look at the use, and the planner hasn't had a chance to testify yet, and the planner will provide all the testimony, I'm assuming, at the next hearing, which will answer all of these questions. The applicant has only presented to the engineer, and the testimony that has been provided so far is how these lot lines are going to be adjusted. So I just ask you to please focus in on what the lot line adjustments are, what your comments and testimony or questions are as to that. But in terms of the planning testimony, I'm gonna ask you to wait until Ms. Cofone has an opportunity to be sworn qualified and testifies through the applicant's case.
Which is when?
Next, next time we schedule for.
December 11th?
December 11th?
No.
Okay.
We'll announce it, we'll announce it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Sure, my first name is Mohamed, M.O.H.A.M.E.D., last name is Salih, S.A.L.E.H. I live in 11 Hibiscus Court, I just recently moved here from suburbs of Seattle. Yeah, I know, it's a long ride, it's a long flight, but, you know, this is all news to me. I just want to know, you know, as a, as a newer resident of this area, how this zoning will affect, what measures will the township have in place to ensure the right-of-ways are dedicated to them or do not reconnect to our development or not prohibiting any sort of industrial vehicles, you know, on our streets or that can affect, you know, our neighborhood? Is this, will it?
So it's not a development that's before this board right now? At the time that there is a site plan application for, for the, for that larger lot, I believe there's a warehouse application? uh, for, for the, for that larger lot, I believe there's a warehouse application that may be an appropriate question at that time. If there's going to be any construction vehicle circulation going through that residential neighborhood, or there's going to be any emergency access going through that neighborhood. But that's not an issue before this board. The only issue before this board is the lot line adjustment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Nothing but the truth.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Uh, my name is Hari, H A R I. Last name is Somaskanthan, S O M A S K A N T H A N.
And your address.
Uh, I live in 10 Wyalaway, Old Bridge, New Jersey.
Take it away.
Uh, I, I stand here tonight not as a resident, but as a neighbor, parent and someone who deeply care about the safety of our future community. The hearing before us may appear to be simple as lot line adjustment, but the reality is more serious. The property is tied directly to a CPS Madison Industries Superfund Site, a place where EPA is still actively monitoring and contamination, overseeing the remediation. On December 10, 2024, US government at the urging of EPA Regional Administrator filed a civil complaint in the federal court against Old Bridge Mineral Inc. Under C R C L A, this is not a routine action. The complaint explicitly states that hazardous substances has been released or at the risk of being released, which means it's an actively releasing and contaminating the entire area, creating an imminent and substantial endangerment to the public health and welfare. Those words carry weight. They mean there is a potential harm that none of us can ignore. Given the seriousness of this finding, which is only a year old, and the fact that the legal case is now moving through the US District Court of New Jersey, I'm asking, truly asking the board to pause. Please do not move forward with the decision on this lot line adjustment until the court issues a ruling. To act before that would be look away from the very real environmental and health concerns that could affect every family living near the site.
So I'm just going to stop you right there, just so you're aware that the board has a statutory timeframe that it is required to act under law. And if it doesn't act within that statutory timeframe, they get an automatic approval. So the board can't delay while this case lingers in the courts for 15 years. The board has to act and has to act timely. So I understand that there is a case and there are concerns, there's an application for the board and the board has to process it just like it would a shed variance. All right?
I, I'm asking you to consider it, not to delay the whole action. You can make the decision yourself, but consider all of those things. Um, I have the, uh, the, uh, the code case that was filed. I could actually produce as a, if you don't have the copy of it.
Wouldn't come into bearing on the board's decision, sir.
Okay, good, good. And so the second question I have is, I know that you have a, a red line over there. We're just wondering, I know we, we talked about there is an access road. Can you explain why do we need an access road on the red lines?
Are we talking about down on the bottom?
And not on the bottom.
I think that was explained by, by counsel that it's dedication back to the township.
But that was on the left side is a dedication to the council, correct? I'm talking about the right side that is red, the center.
Mr. Weary, looking at plan left, um, the bottom of Lot uh, 11.11, there's that red little line that I believe you testified to as to the circulation. Will you just please just explain why that access road is going through?
Correct. It's an access easement, not necessarily an access road. It's essentially being uh, provided to Lot 9.11 and, at the rear so that in the future they could potentially use that area for circulation. That's it.
So you could potentially use it as a road too?
It's inferior to our property. It's wouldn't be a road. It's, it's an access easement between two private property lots. It would not be tantamount to a road.
But that's on top of the super front side. Is that correct?
Well, if it is, it's subject to federal regulations and would have to comply with, and it goes beyond the purview of local zoning in any case. So I'm not certain the answer would be material candidly.
Okay. And, and what are those yellow lines on the right sides going on top of the homes and properties?
That is just a 200 foot uh, boundary around the property, uh, essentially indicating which properties uh, would be noticed for the application.
Okay, that's all my question.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and spell your last for the record.
Nina Joknowitz, Nina, N I N A, last name Joknowitz, J O C H N O W I T Z.
And your address.
203 West Greystone Road. I'm sure before the testimony is over, this lovely board will know my address by heart. Thank you very much. Ms. Vena, you mentioned, because it's in part testimony, correct, that there were some wells and let's make sure everybody knows those some wells are how many? 33 capped wells contaminated, correct? Can you point them?
What does that have to do with the lot lines?
It does.
Okay.
Okay. Can you point out where those wells are? Please?
That's not before the board, ma'am.
Well, but this is why the question I'm asking, because you have a contaminated site. You're going to be asking for an easement to make a road, which is of course this gentleman's purview to say that he can. You're going to be chopping down more trees, which we don't even have data on what type of trees there are. Grandfather, you know, right? Mr. Sullivan, correct?
The only application before the board is for a sightline adjustment. I understand there's concerns about the contamination. I understand there's a concerns about site plan. I understand that there's concerns about future development and the chopping down the trees. The only question that this board is going to vote on, should that lot, should those lines be moved? Nothing else.
Okay, so to that point, important to the entire question is where are the wells? You want to move the lines, you want to build a road, you want to take a road from Boardent Town Road all the way to Route 9. I've been at the meetings, 70 tractor trailers an hour, Vena, I remember. Thank you. That said, and that's of course not in this testimony, but that's in 2021 or 2022. I'm not sure of the year, date or minute.
Stay on point, stay on point, please.
Okay, the point is you want to move the lines, give away a little property back to the town. We need to know where the wells are, point out the contamination on the map that you've testified to. Because when you change those lines, move this stuff around, this imaginary line, what you're doing is you're moving things that are real, like the gentleman spoke of earlier, all the contamination, I think he was over here, um, and everything else, and all the trucks that you're allowed to drive over that little um, easement road through. And we'd like to know where they are, because before you make that decision.
Has nothing to do with this application.
Again, it does, because.
Respectfully, I disagree entirely.
Okay. Again, I'm asking the gentleman, the engineer here, okay, with the site plan that he wants to move imaginary lines to provide us with, thankfully, the all, where all the wells are that are contaminated. And then actually a second question I have for the zoning board. Ms. Vena, I don't, sir, I don't know your engineering, Mr. Engineer, I don't know your name, I apologize. Is you do include anything about the riparian zones, the flood zones? And with all of this map and with all of the hurricanes and with all of the flooding that we have had, right? And we have, because all of you, I know, have lived in this town at least 25 or 30 years, if not more. I don't know you, sir, the zoning board. That said, all of the flooding that has occurred, and I have pictures that I can provide to you of flooding, I'd like to see the aerial maps of that, because when you drive those, those areas through, you can, you'll, I want to see where it's going to go, where that water is going to go, back to, I hate to say it, the super fund site and the contamination that's not cleaned up and everything else. The imaginary lines are going to be contaminating these areas. We have wildlife here and I testified to my identity as a, as a wildlife rehabber. We have families here. We only have, how many houses were built and how many are to be built, Ms. Vena?
Again, Ms. Vena.
To do with this application. And as I explained earlier, the land mass is not going to change in its size.
I understand, Mr. Sullivan, Chairman Sullivan, I understand that.
So whatever is there now is going to be there now.
Except what they're asking for is these lines to move, to move their road in so they can have access to the back, right? So they're going to move a line so they can have access to the back property later to build a warehouse.
I think they can have access to the back property now.
Except what they're trying to do is build a road.
It's their property.
It can do that anyways, even if we deny it.
How many trees are going to be cut down?
That's a site plan question, not before.
And where are the wells?
Also, not before the board. This deals with site plan. This is strictly for the lot lines.
Whether the lines move or not, nothing's changing.
So let me, oh, I have a question for you. That's, thank you, perfect question. What if you didn't move the lines? What's going to happen?
Nothing. It's going to be the exact same as it is now.
Okay, so, so.
Hold on, hold on.
I apologize. So if, then why would they move, why are they asking for lines to be changed?
So they provide a testimony and Mr. Cali, Mr. Weary, please correct me where I'm wrong, but the testimony that was provided was one, so that the lot lines conform with the dedic, with the delineated contaminated areas. Secondly, so that now all the contaminated area is removed and Lot 9.11 is now a clean lot and the contaminated area maintains on, is all going to be maintained on Lot 11.11. And the remaining accessory structures that are associated with the use on Lot 11.11 are now all on their own dedicated lot, rather being split between two lots. Furthermore, as Ms. Sawant represented earlier, this was originally a request that was proposed by the township. And furthermore, the right of way dedication is to, in order so that the township can further accomplish a portion of its circulation element as designated in its 2021 master plan reexamination report. And I believe you said from 2007, 2009.
2009.
So counsel, did I misrepresent your application?
You said it, you said it very well. This is an undertaking in land efficiency, not development or disruption. It's, it's, it's quite that simple.
So you're going to move all the contamination under one spot. Is that correct?
There's no contamination being moved.
Not being moved. I'm talking about in the imaginary line. You're going to take the imaginary line, you're going to move it over to contain it in one spot. What would be the justification to move an imaginary line over into one location? Instead of having it over two lots, 9 and 11 and 12 and, or 10, I'm sorry. I'm just.
You don't need one to move, to move a lot line. A lot line in of itself is, a lot line adjustment in of itself is prima facie approvable by a board. We're here for two reasons. One is for the subdivision and site plan review, which would be completely otherwise conforming, but for two items that we're discussing. It has nothing to do with the access easement, has nothing to do with the right of way dedication, has certainly nothing to do with any prospective development on this property. We're here for two reasons. Beyond that, effectively, you know, it's, I don't want to call it a courtesy review, but it is a review that is prima facie approvable on its face, but for two items of relief. And those were described in detail by the board's consultants, by my consultant, by myself. That being the D2 use variance relief for the expansion of lot area on Lot 11 and the landscape area ratio, which is an existing condition that effectively is no change, but in fact it is slightly improving. Technically, that's bulk relief. Those are the only items we are here to justify, ma'am.
You're talking about the raspberry thing, right? You mentioned, you called it the raspberry decision, right?
Well, we're, we're kind of blending, yeah, legal ideas now, but yes.
Okay, so again, you're moving the imaginary line over to a single lot to make it all contained within an imaginary line.
That's correct.
What would, because you're going to do this and it's supposed to be so nice for us, what would be the justification? Why would you want, what in your imagination provide us with a reason why it should be done?
I'm not going to do that. That's, that's, I don't have to do that and I'm not going to entertain that kind of a subjective notion or inquiry, ma'am.
I'm not asking for subjective. I'm actually asking for scientific or, you know, real reasons, justifications, hardcore, something.
Can't help you with scientific or hardcore. Our professional planner will justify the variance relief shortly when Ms. Cofone testifies at the next public hearing.
So you don't want to explain?
There's nothing to explain.
I'm candidly, I, I really don't even quite understand.
I, I'm trying to understand why you want to move a contamin, you want to move an imaginary line for a contaminated site. So everything is on that one site. To me, it makes sense that you would do that so you could say, okay, we're going to keep building over here where it's not contaminated. And that in the future, thank you very, right? And then that's the second thing.
This is Ms. Jock Nowitz. This is not a debate.
Okay, but this is the, I under.
We asked you to, your questions on topic of what was testified to.
Okay.
All this hyperbole that you're bringing up has nothing to do with this application.
And this is exactly why our town is going from.
Take it into consideration.
And this is exactly why our town is going from woodlands.
Okay, that, now if you're going to bring up, bring up some opinion about something in political, please don't. It has nothing to do with this.
I didn't say political. It's observation, isn't it?
Well, that is your personal, it's your personal feelings about something has nothing to do with this board's decisions.
Okay, when the building, um, Ms. Sawant can answer this. How many trees are taken?
Ms. Sawant does not have to answer questions. You've already asked and you've been answered the questions. You've been given far more than four minutes. I'm now going to ask you to please rest for the evening, okay? We're going to have another hearing. I'm sure you'll be here.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you. I'll bring the photographs for the eggs on the other price property. What is that?
That's the, ma'am, that has nothing to do with the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, safety in the environment doesn't matter to you.
Ma'am, please. You, you already spoke once, sir. I'm not going to entertain it. It's 11:15 now. I'm going to have to.
Do we not get an additional chance? Is it only one time? Because I've been here.
No, it's, I, I'm sure everyone in the courtroom would like, sir, but unfortunately, we have a hard stop at 10:30. I've gone 45 minutes beyond that.
Okay, only one pointed question.
No, sir. No, sir. Not tonight. We will have another date. You can, you can come. I'm going, last person.
I just want to address you guys.
Hold on, hold on. You got to be put under oath.
Mariah Turpin. Yes. Mariah Turpin, T U R P I N. 52 Harvard Road, Parlin, New Jersey, Old Bridge. So we all came here today just because we have, we do have concerns, we do have questions and we appreciate you guys for answering it. What we don't appreciate is the snarkiness and the laughter amongst our questions. You, you did point out Saraville. I happen to live in both Old Bridge and Saraville because my parents are divorced and I want to tell you guys how lucky you guys are that you guys aren't dealing with Saraville residents because they cleared out their council behind the environment. So what I'm explaining to you is that this is very important to us and you can throw a whole bunch of legal jargon, but we understand that things don't just happen just because. We, we know that there's always a plan behind something. So we see that this is the start of a plan. We see that this is a snowball effect. And so for you to say that, I don't know why you guys are here, or I, I can't believe there's so many people.
I don't, no one said anything to that, to that story.
Well, the lawyer hadn't implied that and there was much annoyance coming from these people. I'm just telling you how, how we are feeling about it and how your impression is.
I fully understand all of your emotion and you have to understand something as well. They own the land.
Right.
This man is representing the owners of the land. He's a professional engineer. They're talking about what they want to do to consolidate lots, move the lot line.
Right.
That's it. I don't know what they're going to do 10 years from now. I don't know what they're going to do 10 months from now.
So.
This board is only empowered.
I understand that, sir.
No, ma'am, you don't.
Yeah, I do, I do though.
You don't.
Because, okay, so.
I'm trying to explain to you. You're talking about, you're talking about Parlin, you're talking about clearing out a council. Ma'am, that has nothing to do with this.
That's great. I just want to finish my piece here. Um, what I want you to understand is it absolutely does because this is the same defense that Saraville, this is the same defense that Saraville.
Because your comments have nothing to do with the board. Okay.
Against their people, so for them to be using.
You're interrupting a governmental function, ma'am.
Exactly what Saraville didn't do. So I advise everybody in Old Bridge to continue coming.
Ma'am, I'm asking you to get, please sit down or I'll have you removed. Thank you. All right. All right. Counselor, no. Public portion closed for the evening. That's it. We can't stay here all night. I already told you. We're going to have another meeting. The planner is going to come. Most of your questions probably would relate around the planner's testimony. So we're going to schedule a date for a new hearing. Are we doing January 9th?
January 8th.
I'm sorry, 8th. Nope? Counselor? Okay, I want to give these people a date because it's getting late.
We'll take the 8th for now, Mr. Chairman. We'll preserve it for the record, purposes of carrying. If we end up having to shuffle it, I, I will speak with counsel and we will go from there. But for now.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Sorry about that. I said it is the board's policy that there's new notice when the carries into the new year. So we're just going to ask you to, um, renotice for the public, okay, counselor?
Not a problem, counsel.
All right, matter 56 diss 2024 Z, Old Bridge Chemicals. This matter is going to be continued January 8th with further notice. Please check on the website to make sure that it's on for that evening. Thank you all for appearing.
Thank you very much, folks. Happy holidays to everybody.
Same to all.
We'll see you in the new year.
Yeah, in a minute, in a minute, we're clear, we're going to clear the room. Yeah, we're going to clear, close the room.
We got to call for an adjournment.
I don't want to open up any further public portion.
We got, we got to call for an adjournment.
No, I know, I already did. More and more than I needed.
We got to call for an adjournment. Oh, okay.
All right, Port seven, move for an adjournment.
Move it.
Move it.
Is there a second? All in favor, any opposed? Stand adjourned.
Aye.